We're not going to have the usual formalities. We're just going to dive right into it. And I'll turn it over to the city manager for a couple of opening remarks.
Thank you. Just wanted to orient you all a little bit. So in front of you, you should have the four presentations for the departments that we'll be discussing this evening. We have tried to be kind and we have three-hole punched it already, so you can put it into your binders. And there's even a tab at the very back that says Budget Work Sessions that you can put those presentations to.
And before you continue, I've been remiss. I didn't welcome Councilmember-elect Kate Stewart to the dais.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
She's at the dais for these budget work sessions. We really technically don't have any voting items before she gets sworn in on the 21st. All we have is budget work sessions. So if we have straw votes or anything like that, I figured she can vote. If we were to have a formal vote, she couldn't vote.
Great. Thank you.
Now, back to you. Sorry about that.
Welcome. Welcome, Councilmember. So we'll be talking about each of the departments this evening. Also, obviously, in your packets, you've got the presentation that was given last week, this past Monday. This week, on Monday. You've also got the after-action reports from the council retreats that we did in November and January, as well as the presentations that were given at the department roundtables, which provides a little bit more information about even some of the departments we'll be talking about tonight. Just as one small recap from the presentation that was made on Monday, we sort of talked a little bit about how we got to the fiscal year 15 budget. And we talked a little bit about this slide here, which looks at total revenues and total expenditures that the cities had over the past 10 years, as well as the primary revenue and expenditure drivers, and sort of the direction that those are taking.
That's page 25.
Slide 25. I apologize. Slide 25. And just as a small recap, as we sort of thought about the fiscal year 15 budget, we wanted to, again, try to see if, just directionally, we can make sure that our expenditures are moving in the same direction that we think that our revenues are largely going to be moving towards. And, you know, to those ends, we anticipate that tax revenue, which makes up the majority of our total revenue that the city receives, we do not anticipate that it will increase greatly in fiscal year 16 because we're in the second year of a three-year property tax assessment cycle. And so when we were thinking about the fiscal year 15 budget, we were also very mindful of where we think we're going to be in fiscal year 16. And so many of the things that you'll hear even this evening, in terms of the departments, has a mind towards where we might end up, not even this next fiscal year, but the fiscal year after that. So just wanted to provide just a little bit of context in terms of the direction that the total budget's taking, and just some context as well for some of the presentations I've had this evening.
In that regard, the current fiscal year 14 was our first fiscal year under the triennial assessment. This is the fifth. The one we're looking at now will be the second year, and 16 will be the last year.
That is correct.
So in 17, obviously, we could expect a significant change, in theory.
In theory.
Okay. I just wanted to get my timing straight on there.
The challenge is, obviously, even next year, fiscal year 16, when we're budgeting, we won't know that for a fact either. We'll be in the same boat that we are today, which is that we will, like many other people, be expecting that we would take advantage of some of the price appreciation, which we talked about a little bit even in the presentation. That's currently happening because it's this current property cycle that we'd like to be judged against, as opposed to the property cycle from two years ago. But it's difficult for us to bank on that.
So we should keep this chart in mind as we think about your proposal for the reduction in the unappropriated fund balance?
You know, I think this chart is helpful for lots of things. You know, one of the items that we talked about last time is that we are trying to either slow the growth of some of our reserve funds that we have in the city, some of the balances that we have, and/or utilize some of the balances that we have. I think one of the good things structurally about the city's budget is that even through some of the leaner times of the most recent recession, the city has been fairly conservative in terms of unreserved fund balances for the facility maintenance reserve, for the equipment replacement reserve, as well as just the general unreserved fund balance. And so, you know, every time, again, referencing back to this chart, it's not necessary for the orange line and the blue line, which is total revenue and total expenditure, to always be at the same point, because the city does have unreserved fund balances available to cover any potential shortfalls. However, structurally, you'd want to be close. You don't want to be funding ongoing expenditures with short-term, one-time money.
I just want to say that I think, because we have people viewing this who are not here in the audience, is that a lot of times, people don't understand that we use that unreserved fund balance as our -- to make up the difference when we plan for a fiscal year where we're going to be spending more than we project we're going to be taking in. Because I've had some constituents say, "You're creating an unbalanced budget." And I'm saying to them, "No, think of this as the checking account, but you also, in the same bank, have a savings account."
Moreover, I think even if you -- which I apologize, we have, which is sort of a graph that shows the unreserved fund balance over the last 10 years. And it's largely, as you would expect, that those unreserved fund balances now sort of grow during the times that are fairly prosperous. And then when times become lean, all municipalities, all jurisdictions, all governments dip into those balances when revenues start to be shorter than some of the expenditures. So it's a cycle. And we're sort of in a -- we're not, in terms of the broader economy necessarily, in that cycle, but certainly in terms of our property tax assessment cycle, we are in that cycle. And again, I don't say all this to say that this budget is doom and gloom and that, you know, this precludes future spending. And, I mean, that's not the intent, but it is to try to give as accurate a picture about the direction that we think the budget is going.
And can you wrap your quote of about two minutes ago in a nice little bow and save it somewhere? You said the city has been conservative.
Yes. The city has, yes. Sorry. So you want me to just say -- sorry. Say that again?
No, no. That was joke.
Okay. Gotcha. I apologize.
Tacoma Park was conservative.
Right. Fiscally.
Yes.
But it's true, though.
Yeah, it is.
Fiscally, not --
We're Democrats under, unlike the Republicans who got us in this huge deficit, we're in.
No comment. So with that, I will -- we will head into the first presentation for this evening, which I believe is Communications. Is the first up?
I think it's --
There we go.
I have to take you back to the photograph of the workday night form, which does show one of the really valuable parts of our city TV staff, being able to share these kinds of events with our community. I don't have a very long presentation with Communications, but I have some highlights -- excuse me -- and some confusing numbers, so I just want to explain them briefly. The first has to do with the operating expenses. What was projected for FY14 had operating revenues of $673,000, and what we're projecting for FY15 is $316,000. This has to do with the disappointment that we feel that Montgomery County did not live up to its agreement to provide a greater proportion of operating revenue for our cable fund and less of a contribution to our capital revenue, which is highly restricted and can really only be used for cable capital and wiring equipment. We are working on trying to address the situation and have the county go back to the kind of verbal agreement that it had. That agreement, although it was verbal, was reflected in the county's operating budget for FY14. So we did not put it into our budget until we saw it in their budget and was adopted. Nevertheless, they did not follow through on the steps that needed to take to amend the memorandum of agreement between the city and the county.
And that took up the bulk of my testimony last night at the county's operating budget public hearing.
Operating budget, public hearing. Right. So we are working on it. I don't know the answer yet, but we have -- we are not counting on it for the FY15 budget. We have gone to our more fiscally prudent option, given that the other arrangement did not work out. And you will see, similarly, the capital revenues were projected to be $125,000, and instead, they're almost $900,000. And one of the things you'll notice at the bottom of this chart is that, right now, we have a little over $3 million in that account that is very restricted. We're going to be upgrading our equipment to HD. We're going to be building a data center. And we're still going to probably have at least $3.4 million when all that's done over the next year, sitting in that account. And the money just keeps coming in. We are hopeful that we can use that, those funds, as a leverage to get some more usable funds for us to pay the staff and to help pay for the maintenance of our various programs. And at a different time, we'll keep you up to date on how those discussions go. We do expect some expenditures to rise for our communications section, which encompasses cable TV, the website, the newsletter, the various PR activities that we have, and the social media activities that we have. We are seeing a 25% increase. This is primarily related to the higher personnel costs, and I think that's just about it. We are expecting a good amount more of expenditures on some contracts that help provide the services for cable TV for some of the extra hours that we do get compensated for and are not reflected as revenue in this budget. The capital -- I'm sorry?
Sorry. If you can just back up for a second.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking one thing that Councilmember-elect Stewart might find useful in understanding the source of the revenues that you're talking about, either operating or capital.
The -- most of the operating and capital revenues for cable TV come from agreements with cable franchises for Verizon, RCN, and Comcast. They each have different franchise arrangements. There's certain payments that we receive in different kind of categories. Each of the different cable companies has slightly different restrictions, and then there's some federal law that also affects those. We work with Montgomery County and most of the other Montgomery County municipalities in doing kind of joint franchise negotiations. But we then, after the bulk of the negotiations are completed, we do have some specified actions, and this council will have to sign off on the franchise agreements as we renegotiate them. Comcast is in renegotiation right now. RCN will start in this next year. Verizon's a couple of years from now. These funds do, as I said, have some restrictions applied to them, but we have benefited primarily from Verizon and all of the money that people spend on cable. So that's -- and I'm happy to go through that also at more length, as you wish. For the full-time equivalents, we are basically keeping what we've had. We've got four full-time employees. We have contracted and we've hired a temporary part-time web assistant at .35 time. We went through, and you'll see as we go through some of the different departments, we've been trying to be very clear about how we categorize full-time equivalents. And to be consistent, we needed to show this as a partial FTE for the additional web assistance that we do have on staff. The data center that we were hoping to get designed and underway this year will be in FY15. The HD upgrade is underway now. We anticipate it to be done by the end of this fiscal year, but I could see it going over a month or so.
Could you put a couple sentences to explain what the data center is?
The data center is a room that has many servers and other connections for public safety, for all of our different web connections, and that kind of thing. The cable funds do pay for the kind of IT support and hardware that also work with cable systems and the public safety activities. We basically took over an old telephone room and put servers in it. And it doesn't have the adequate design, air conditioning, various things that a secure and efficient data center should have. All of the funds that are needed to design and build that will come from the cable capital funds that really can't be spent on much other, like many other things.
Thanks.
Will that remain where it is physically, or will it be moved to a different piece of the building?
I think the idea is that it probably will be in the same area, but we are open to getting the advice from the consultant when we hire the designer.
That wasn't the room we saw in the basement, was it?
Yes.
That's the one. Okay. Now I understand what it is.
And I'm sorry, this is the $158,000? This is the base center?
It's about that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So can you tell me why is it with the franchise agreements, Dish Network or DirecTV, they are not part of them?
The -- it has to do with underground lines and kind of the history of telephone wire in this country. The community, because these various cable television areas use our right-of-way to -- rights-of-way to serve their clients, their customers, there is a -- there have been provisions for municipalities or other jurisdictions to rent the space, to get a fee for the use of public space. It doesn't necessarily -- hasn't traditionally worked as well with some of the satellite stuff. There's lots of telecommunications law discussions and bills to try to find some ways of handling that. We never know exactly how that else is going to come out, but it's been under discussion for quite a few years now.
And when do you think we're going to go online with HD?
I think by the end of the summer, we'll have it all.
And we will?
I'm sorry. We will have it available. There's -- the catch is that we will have to have a decision made about when it only goes out in HD, and people who don't get HD then aren't served with our cable. And so there's -- there are -- the transfer and broadcasting into HD will happen this summer, but it goes into a conversion system as it goes to the kind of to Rockville, where the hub of all of the cable lines are. It gets converted to SD and back out to our community. So online, it'll be HD, but when it comes through anybody's television, it will be better than it is now, but it will not be a full HD until we do some negotiation and make some decisions about when we want that switch to be flipped.
And do you anticipate higher data charges once we go to HD?
No.
Okay.
A comment I wanted to ask is, I wonder if you maybe say something about the fact that we do have an attorney under retainer for this --
That's right.
-- these negotiations.
Yes. We have a telecommunications attorney, an attorney that works on telecommunications matters for the city and for some of the other municipalities, both in Montgomery County and Prince George's County. And the fees are expected to come out of actually the cable television settlements, not from us.
Oh. Cool.
So just to go over the budget at a glance, we are anticipating contracting at about $35,000 for services to optimize our web resources for mobile devices. I think we've got 30% or 40% of folks who prefer or maybe only access web stuff through mobile devices, and so it needs to be optimized for that. We have other website improvements that we're working on, but we would want other contract assistance for as well.
May I say about the web?
Yes.
The mobile devices are important, but the biggest problem with the website right now is that is material that's not online, especially council material that's produced on a regular basis. And then the search system, that the Granicus search is not integrated with the rest of the website search, and the indexes on the regular website search are not well-ranked. I could elaborate on that at some other point, if you wish.
And it is on our list of things to address with the contractors, and as we go through this. Thank you. Did you?
Okay.
I mean, a similar concern I would note is I look back at last year's budget, and in previous years, we had 137,000 webpage hits in 2012 and a projected 175,000 in 2013. And now we're reporting 38,000 and 39,000. So we're reporting a --
Right. And it's not -- they're not the same units.
Why is that?
We are thinking that the old units basically tagged every little page and -- as opposed to how a person really uses it. So it's -- we did not go through and try to figure out, and I don't know if we were technically able to figure out what the comparative numbers are. Yeah?
Do you want me to answer that one quick?
Quick.
The old system was incorrect, and it was -- it was through a third party. It was through our providers, and it just wasn't consulted correctly. I went back through, I checked it, and it turned out that about 100,000 of those 137,000 were just PDF downloads. And they were just getting rolled in.
So like PDF downloads of a budget document?
Yeah. Anything that came from like an illegitimate source was also counted too, and that has been eliminated. So starting from about January 2013, the numbers will be way, way more accurate. So consider like this year kind of a day zero for correct analysis.
I guess I have sort of a generic question, because, you know, I'm not just a layperson when it comes to things like what we're talking about here or what Craig is talking about. You know, and the guess is that, how do we know if we have a successful website? Because I don't know. If I go into, you know, if you run a bookstore, you know. If you run a restaurant, you kind of know, and a lot of other things like that. But in terms of how do you measure a success of a website, I mean, unless it's -- I just -- I don't even know where to how to ask the question, much less than the --
There's a number of different ways to judge that. There's varieties of criteria that are used for judging websites, and we would be submitting our website to those criteria.
Yeah. I mean, I don't expect you to answer that now. I mean, that's not really a budget question. But it's just something that I would appreciate, because we're just going to list the number of hits. I don't know what -- even those numbers, I don't know what that really tells us.
It's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sometimes more page views can be worse, because if it's a matter of having to click on four pages to get to what you want rather than two pages.
Exactly. Right.
It would be interesting to add to the chart how long people are spending on the website.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a good indicator and goes to somewhat Fred is raising.
Right. We do have quite a lot of detail about how the website is being used right now, what people go to, how long they spend on that, and happy to go through some of that with you. It's very useful when we talk about especially prioritizing what gets fixed first. Okay. I did mention the completing the HD upgrade of the system. I also add exploiting that, because many of our things that we do show are perhaps their performances, or perhaps they need to be seen on a small screen and be seen well. And so how that integrates with the other ways that people -- people don't sit home and just watch their cable TV. Generally, this is, it's a link from a social media site, and you click on the thing to see the little video snippet, and you want to be able to see it well. And we would like to be able to exploit that as we go forward. I did talk already about the design and build the data center. And I think, and I referenced the beginning, but we are planning on protecting the city's communications and financial interests as we negotiate with the cable companies and as we continue to negotiate with Montgomery County. One of the things that I particularly like about our activities with a very small staff is that we work with the staff in all the different departments. We help promote the kinds of things that they're working on. We help get their -- they help get the word out. We help get the word out. And we cross-promote the various activities. And I think some of the things that you'll find are with Safegrow, we have very good information on the website, and we have different kinds of links to that as we go through. When we've had the age 16 and 17 voting, we had the -- on the website, the legal information related to voting. We had the press releases. We had the city TV interviews with various folks who were voting, and we had that promoted out in a variety of different ways for different kinds of uses. We had the story in the newsletter, all of these different things kind of cross-promoting each other and providing that information as people need to get them for their different needs. I think some of the things that we're most looking forward to in the coming year has to do with economic development efforts and how we leverage kind of how we look online, how we look even in this budget document, how we promote the various sites around the city, and make that something that shows that we're marketing our community. That's just about it. I'm happy to answer any other questions and look forward to working on many of the different kinds of web improvements as we get somebody on contract to do some of these specialized functions.
Since we have a large Spanish-speaking population in the city, do we do anything to reach out to like a Telemundo or the Spanish newspapers?
Oh, yeah. Actually, if you talk with our city TV staff, they've got some very strong connections with different Spanish news outlets, and we do some things that they use and vice versa. We also try to reach other folks that have other languages. Not -- we haven't been as successful at that yet, but it is something that we look at. So we do try to make those connections.
All right. Thank you.
The budget, the -- sorry. The service and charges line in the budget goes from 126,000 to 188,000, so $60-plus thousand increase.
each other, and, and providing that information as people need to get them for their different needs. I think some of the things that we're most looking forward to in the coming year has to do with economic development efforts, and how we leverage, kind of, how we look online, how we look even in this budget document, how we promote the various sites around the city, and, and make that something that shows that we're marketing our community. That's just about it. I'm happy to answer any other questions, and look forward to working on many of the different kinds of web improvements as we get somebody on contract to, to do some of these specialized functions.
Since we have a, a large Spanish-speaking population in the city, do we do anything to reach out to like, a Telemundo or the Spanish newspapers?
Oh, yeah, actually, if you, if you talk with our city TV staff, they've got some very strong connections with different Spanish news outlets, and we do some things that they use, and vice versa. We also try to reach other folks that have other languages. Not, we haven't been as successful at that yet, but it is something that, that we look at. So, we, we do try to make those connections.
All right, thank you.
The budget, the, sorry, the service and charges line in the budget goes from one hundred and twenty-six to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so sixty, sixty-plus thousand dollars in cre, increase in service and charges. So, I'm assuming part of that is this thirty-five thousand dollar contract for the mobile
Right.
device, but I was curious what the remaining?
There's a little bit more that we're going to put with the newsletter, just to, to kind of match what we end up really spending on, on some of that.
Okay.
The only thing I might add is, at some point, and not now, because again, it doesn't really deal directly with the budget, I'd like to, to address the possibility of increasing either the frequency or the amount of information in the newsletter. This is just apropos of the fact that it's the one single source that gets to every citizen, every resident of our city, about as reliably as anything we can imagine.
I'd love to talk to you about that. One of the things that we will be doing is, right now, we just post the, the newsletter as a PDF on the website, but we want to make it so you don't have to do that, you can go directly to an article, so it's, it's much more searchable and usable that way. And also, you know, if there's something that has to be updated or corrected, we can handle that quickly. So, I, but I'm happy to talk with you at some point about, about the newsletter and how that works.
The, the thing about the newsletter, I mean, it's great to be able to make it translatable and readable on the web, but there are so many people that I come in contact who are not, who don't have broadband, and who just, they're not on any list serves, and, you know, that whole thing. And, and that, the not, the, the fact that it's on, the fact that it's newsprint is what makes it so valuable.
Well, it is interesting. A lot of people really do prefer getting that newsletter in their mail every month, and as we go through, and we see the resident survey should be coming back in within a few weeks, see, you know, how that's, how people feel about that. In the past, it has been a source that they relied on, and as the Gazette is so haphazard in where it delivers, it's gotten to the point where it's, it's the one thing that, if we have to get information out to households, it, or an individual direct mailing are about the only ways.
Right. Thanks.
I mean, I just wanted to follow up on that. That's still a, twenty-five thousand is still a pretty big increase in funding there, based on historical numbers. And I just, I'd like to see a little, it doesn't have to be in a, in one of our meetings, it could be provided by email.
Mm-hmm.
But just a little bit more detail on, on what that's going to. I mean, ballpark, that's, that's the equivalent of all our small grants, right? It's, it's a, we spend a whole work session talking about things like that, so I'm just curious.
Certainly, I can, I can give you the breakdown.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? I think, just as we do the various departments, if you have other ideas or questions, please send them, and, and we'll follow up on them, and get that information out.
Yeah, because we want to make sure, as we get to the end of each section, that we have anything that's appropriate to this section, and then when we get to the end of the meeting with these four, we'll kind of say, okay, is there anything else of a general nature that we need, you know, requests for information, or requests for anything else? So, we're all set on communications?
The next one we will be doing is the library.
Are you going to move this, or do I? Doesn't matter. I'm ready. Good evening. The first page is a departmental summary, and I would, I would like to briefly mention just a couple of things. The revenues consist of fines and fees, and library aid from Montgomery County, and that increases by, by twelve point one percent. Expenditures by one point six percent. The FTEs appear to increase by point seven-four percent, but that actually reflects a pool of substitute hours that were always in the budget, but not included in the FTEs previously. So, it's not an increase in dollars, or staff, or hours. The capital budget increases by quite a bit. It's the largest increase that the libraries asked for in a very long time, and I wanted to, I want to discuss that in detail. The main requests there are for an ILS, which is an integrated library system, and space planning for the library. As you know, the library completed a needs assessment report at the end of two thousand thirteen. The three main recommendations of that report are here on this page. And I'd like to go first to the right to collection assessment, which is not directly tied to budget numbers, although it's very labor-intensive. It involves refining and refocusing our collections by getting rid of outdated and unwanted materials so that people can more easily find what they want. The other two items are directly tied to the budget. First of all, an integrated library system, which is a, it involves the management of our book and patron database, and includes remote access to catalog and patron records, circulation, and catalog functions. The migration from our old system actually could cost anywhere from ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars, depending on whether we end up purchasing an open source or a proprietary system. We're still in the process of educating ours, excuse me, educating ourselves, finding out about what is available and what's going to meet our needs. We don't know yet. The ongoing annual maintenance could again range from a thousand to ten thousand dollars a year. We basically have the same system.
I apologize, Ellen. Could you say, how, how old is our existing?
I, I was, I was, that's what I was going to say next. We basically have the same system that we did when we first automated the library in nineteen ninety-seven. That was a local outfit called Maxus. They were, they were purchased by Autographics in two thousand five, and that system is basically unchanged in design from the nineties. And we've gotten a lot of complaints in our focus, in the focus groups and survey responses about the system we have now. I'd like to focus on some of the benefits that the public would realize from a new ILS system. As I say, ours was, was designed in the nineties. It's often puzzling to people. The upgrades have often made it worse. People have expectations about how software should work and look, based on their other experiences online, and our system simply doesn't meet that standard. With a new system, people would encounter less confusion when they try to access their accounts online. It would be a faster, more intuitive, more user-friendly system. For example, people could, when they make a search, they could get collection results by, in a certain format. This way, if you're looking up a certain subject right now, you get a mixture, you could get a mixture of children's books, adult books, and media, and you'd have to go to an individual record to find out if it was really what you wanted. That's an example. An online catalog could show, would show enhanced content, that is, features such as book covers, reviews, from a recommended source at a reasonable price. Our patrons could have a mobile interface that scales properly. Seventy percent of the public now use mobile devices as their primary computing tool. Modern libraries offer catalogs that work well on their various computing platforms, and ours is almost unusable on mobile devices. A new system could provide much clearer receipts for payments that patrons make, clearer and more, well, clearer financial records. Right now, the process of logging and fine payments is extremely awkward, confusing, and time-consuming. Patrons could receive consistent or trouble-free email notifications of the circulation status, which they get, we offer that weekly. But right now, for example, Verizon customers don't get those emails, and we're, we're working on resolving that problem. There are a variety of problems. That's the current one. We could have the option of a cloud-based system, where information would be more secure. It wouldn't close down when the local server went down, and upgrades would be automatic. They wouldn't have to be scheduled on a weekend or at night when the library was closed. And probably most important, people who come into the library could get faster and more efficient service from staff in the library, because staff wouldn't have to struggle with an archaic and cumbersome system. We could get, staff could get things like customization or special resorts, reports, but those are the main benefits to the customer, which I really wanted you to focus on. Next?
On, on that one?
Please.
I just want to make sure that I'm correct in my assumption, that the open source is the cheaper alternative?
Yes, it is.
And the proprietary is the more expensive?
Yes. There's quite a range there.
Wow.
Next, I would like to talk about library space planning.
Actually, before you move on?
I'm sorry.
If I may. What about, what's the state of the integration of catalogs and searches with Montgomery County library system? And then, is there some possibility of collaboration or use of the prevailing Montgomery County systems in Tacoma Park, if they're worth importing here?
Well, we can access, I mean, we can access them for our customers, but are you talking about integrating our catalog with theirs?
You know, I, I've heard requests along those lines quite in the past, though, so I don't know what the state is, but I know that people have desired to, for instance, to do searches, and if the item they're searching for is not held in Tacoma Park, it comes up that it's held in Silver Spring, that kind of thing.
My understanding is that there are ways to do that. I don't know a lot about it, so I'd like to be able to get back to you with more information. Not, not exclusively Montgomery County?
Sure, sure.
But other libraries?
Yeah, so, you know, of course, if you're, if you're making, if you're making a system change, then now's the time to look for capabilities like that.
Exactly. I agree. Again, referring back to the needs assessment report, seventy, seventy-seven percent of survey respondents identified the library as a place for community engagement. A key library role identified in the community focus groups was as a gathering place for all ages. The library building will be sixty years old in two thousand fifteen. The last renovation we had of public spaces was twenty-five years ago, in nineteen ninety. The major recommendation, again, a major recommendation of the needs assessment report based on focus group and survey results was for things that entail more space. They asked repeatedly for more space for books, more comfortable seating, more natural light, collaborative space, quiet space, dedicated children's programming space, tutoring space, dedicated teen space, and so on, most of which we, we can't provide at all now. A library redesign would enable us to become a truly twenty-first century library. It would be spacious and attractive. It could offer flexible spaces for a variety of service functions, which incorporate, again, flexibility for the future. It would provide for convenient and efficient delivery of services. The space planning that we're asking for funding for this year would include the initial phases of library space planning, with assistance from a consultant, an architect experienced in working with public libraries, and a structural engineer. It would include putting together a program of requirements, developing a conceptual design around that program, and getting advice from a structural engineer on the possibility of library expansion. That's basically what I have to say about, about library space planning. Do you have questions about that, before I go on?
Just a brief one. My, my sense from having participated in the process of evaluating what might be needed, what I came away from that with was a new sense that modern libraries look at more diverse space in a place like this, where there would be options for uses in places other than what's now the, the space enclosed and thought of as the library.
Right.
That there were possibilities for doing things, potentially even out in the lobby, or just different places around, and I'm assuming that that's kind of the focus of part of the space planning?
It could be.
Is, is not just...
It could be, for sure.
So, so that it's not just, gee, can we expand outward or upward, or, you know, how can we maybe get some bang for the buck with existing space?
Right, that's true. I mean, there is the potential for putting, like, self-serve units in other buildings, self-checkout units, rather. Right now, our only existing model for that is the Free Little Libraries, and there's one up at the Co-op now, but I've just recently learned that the Friends of the Library, in conjunction with the Girl Scouts, are planning twelve more at various locations. That's just in the planning stages, and it's not the same as self-checkout, but it is a form of outreach that's inexpensive.
It also seemed that there were some interesting possibilities for even, like, you know, this space, kind of where there's some seating in the lobby to, or something like that, where there, where there could be places where, say, teens could collaborate.
Outside the computer center.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a space that's basically underutilized, or not really utilized at all. There certainly could be study stations there, and places where people could access Wi-Fi, because people are accessing wireless, sitting on the floor before, before it opens, and also sitting outside. I mean, there, there's certainly potential for offering service there.
And I guess there's also even thought of something outside on that, whatever you call that space outside, the...
Yeah.
The, that lobby where...
Right.
People, people could congregate on tables and chairs.
Exactly. It's a great idea.
So, so that it's things that could happen relatively quickly for a small amount of money.
Yes, I agree.
So, I just want to make sure those are...
No, you're right.
...incorporated in this, in the concept of the space planning, that that's what we're talking about.
Right. We are in part.
You know, the larger picture and those smaller pieces.
It's one reason why it would be important to be working with a consultant who has experience in public library planning.
Oh, really?
Who has, you know, a sense of what is possible, once we establish what the parameters are, what the limitations might be. Okay.
There's also, there's also entrust that, you know, just totally outside the city facilities, and having books available, children's books especially. I know I talked to some of Jared's constituents, Chekka Frazier and Sherwanda Oliver, about the Essex House, the community rooms there. There, there could be other buildings, and, you know, it's a matter of serving the community without, outside the boundaries of our own facilities.
That's true. We actually did donate some books to Essex House this past summer.
Yes, and I want to thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, well, those were donations through the Friends of the, whoops, the Friends of the Library, some books that, they weren't part of our collection, so there was not the potential for, for checkout, and the kids weren't easily able to visit the library in a group.
Right.
So, those were donations. We've also, the Friends have also purchased and donated books for the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. And Dave Burbank has done some of his programs for kids, both at Essex House and New Hampshire Avenue in the past.
Well, I would like you guys to work with me again this year, because I'm going to have Lunch and Learn, looks, again, it looks like it's going to be at Washington Methodist University.
Oh, really?
Because the Essex House apartments is under renovation.
Ah, okay.
So, I, I will be touring a, a space tomorrow, and so we would love Dave to come and do some programming for the kids, and also some more bucks.
Okay. But not programming tomorrow, but in the future?
Right, right. Yes, yes.
Right. Okay. No, it's, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we are, can go to the last slide now, which is sort of a summary page, really. The library has significant opportunities going forward. Our Sunday hours at the library and computer center continue to be popular. Average... Average use showed an increase of eighty-seven percent between May of 2013 and March of 2014, from two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifteen transactions per Sunday to four-hundred-and-two. And then, the quarterly reports that you get reflect, you know, the, the use for all of those Sundays, which does tend to go up and down some.
Okay. So, you're saying you think that the library hours was, was a good use of, of city money?
Oh, yes.
And, and you figure these numbers that you've just given us for this May to March will continue to increase a little bit?
I, I think they will continue to increase. I mean, we were somewhat concerned about the, you know, the church parking on Sundays, but still, it, you know, there's a lot of use, partly walk-in, and people, people do find parking, especially when we have our programs by two. A lot of those church visitors are, are out of there, and, yeah, it's working out much more positively than, than I thought it might at a certain point. Yeah, I'm very encouraged about it. We're doing more programming there, and we're planning more for the spring and summer.
When, when we spend dollars, like we did, we took a chance last year, and we got good results, so of course, the natural thing is think, well, what would each additional dollar that we spend hypothetically give us in terms of use of the library, within reason?
Of course.
You know, not suggesting we go twenty-four-seven, but, but I'm just speaking in, in that sort of hypothetical vein that, you know, it's, it's just that, we, it just seems like the more we do for the library, the, the more the library is successful.
I would agree. It's interesting, in, again, going back to that, that report, there were like six or seven comments about how everybody loved the Sunday hours, and some people asked for later evening hours, I mean, like past nine o'clock. Some people asked for morning hours. I mean, there, there is almost no time when the library would not be used to some extent.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
That's incredible.
But the Sundays seem especially popular because people have told us often they couldn't, they couldn't come on a Saturday, there's soccer, there's all these other family activities, and it's a nice library day for people. So-
What's the latest that, that we're open?
Nine P.M.
Nine P.M.
In the library.
If I might, one of the things that's been kind of interesting in the kind of vision of the 21st Century Library and the ILS and whatever, is that there are some options over time where you can do quite a bit online, you could reserve a book, you could say, gee, I'd like, I've got a couple of books I'd like to pick up, and then there can be a way that you can get them after hours. So, there's a variety of things that even if you're not open twenty-four-seven-
That's right.
That it ends up being a more community service, whether it's, it's at a different location or there's different kinds of options. So, it's, it's pretty exciting to see a variety of options that other libraries have been trying.
Just, just actually getting at a question that I know Councilmember Siemens is real interested in, which is the availability of electronic reader devices in the library and to help us stay current with the increased use of electronic devices for reading as opposed to books on paper.
Well, you know we have eBooks now.
I don't.
I'm sorry that you don't. We do, through freedding.
I, I love paper, sorry.
Well, I love paper too, actually, but we do have freedding at low cost. It's a system that offers, like, more than twenty-two thousand titles from dozens of libraries, and the neat thing about it is they offer simultaneous access, so you don't have to go on a list to wait for a title. Some of the bestsellers that you want may not be on that list, but, you know, there are many, many books that are, and you can access them right away. What we're planning on doing right now, we don't have their bibliographic records in our catalog, so it's been harder to get, it's been harder to inform the public that we have eBooks, although we're trying, and that is something, importing the records is something we're planning on doing in the future, so when you bring up, you know, a title or subject, you'd see exactly what's there. You know, we have more digital resources, for sure, you know, in reference, you know, language, study materials, testing materials. They take up less space, they're constantly being updated, and they're a wonderful resource for us. We're planning on offering a workshop on apps for parent, apps for kids, for parents, and similar things. So, we're very sensitive to those kinds of requests for people, and we want to do more. We want to do as much as we can. Moving, I'm sorry.
Oh, you, I'm, 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 I can wait till you're done.
No, I was just going to go on to the next page, so please ask.
Okay. I'm interested in what will happen to our library use when the Silver Spring Library opens, and I expect you are too.
I am too.
It's pretty close to us. So, I don't know how we track that, but, but it might be something worth looking at in our numbers for, I'm assuming it's going to open next year, but whenever it opens, like, you know, before, after, or some sort of, you know, the next resident survey, it might be something where we'd want to pick up a question-
Right, I agree.
About that issue.
Bear in mind, though, that we are within walking distance of five schools, if you include the colleges, and again, some of the respondents to, you know, the survey and the focus groups really liked the location of the library, felt it was ideal. You could walk to the library, you could come with your families, you know, most of the time you don't have to worry about parking. So, you know, I think this location is ideal for Tacoma Park, and I think that's why it's valued, valued as a local resource. I, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but-
Yeah, I mean, I just think it may be, whatever the evaluation is that we get done, you know, we may want to have them think about that as well, because there's clearly a niche for our library, and just understanding how it changes-
Right.
Not just because of technology, but because of services and adjoining communities is important. My other two questions, which they may be more relevant later on, I note that, or one's a comment, one's a question, I note that we have an increase in FTEs without benefits. So, I was curious about that. We go from point three-eight FTEs without benefits to two FTEs without benefits.
This is library?
This is substitutes.
Substitutes.
Yeah, it would be the substitutes.
So, we already had them, but now it's being reported in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And my last comment was, and it's in relation to the, the Silver Spring comment, is, and this may seem heretical, but, you know, bookstores that allow you to have coffee in the bookstore are disappearing. I wonder about the possibility of having, for example, you know, one day a month or one day a quarter, where we get a mobile food truck that serves, not food, but coffee, a mobile, a mobile coffee tea truck, and you let people have coffee in the library and see if that doesn't create-
That would be wonderful. I mean, it's actually been proposed before, like, years ago, and didn't really go anywhere. But, yeah, you can get mobile units. You don't have to have them there all the time. Yeah, I think it would be great. I think people would use it, and it could be a source of revenue.
And we could just run it as a, you know, sort of extension of the food truck program brought into a city building where people like to sit and read, and anyway.
Yeah.
Especially when we get our food truck location, which is right outside the doors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It'd be like you get a Starbucks franchise out there. I can tell you, my wife would never-
Because that would be the combining the two greatest things in her life.
The other, the other thing I knew that lots of areas are doing are the pop-up locations, right? And so, you know, I wonder if a farmer's market or something like that would have just a small pop-up location that they have either in our parking lot or in some other place within the building itself, just to show their wares and get people to, to be attracted there, but also they know that, that the library is a natural meeting place, that they're going to see people, and so that could work out as well.
Oh, I thought you were talking reverse, having the library take a card up for the farmer's market.
Either or.
Well, that's possible, too. Any other questions, right?
I just wanted to clarify just one thing. The integrated library system is on the E R R, the Equipment Replacement Reserve, so, and the library space planning would be out of the Facilities Maintenance Reserve. So, just wanted to show why it's not necessarily listed on the pages of the library in your book.
And, and there's, is there one other thing that comes out of the Facilities Maintenance Reserve? The, the, the one library piece and-
The police.
The police. So, the two, the two space planning are out of that.
The two space planning are out of that, correct.
Okay. Well, I'm, again, I'm summarizing here. I'm almost done. The, the 2013 Needs Assessment Report gives us a concrete plan for the adoption of 21st Century best practices for public libraries, including community gathering and engagement, outreach, collections, technology, spaces, and children's services. The focus group and survey results show that residents support the library as a valued local resource. Residents express desire for library improvements, however, will require space planning for future development. Collection assessment is underway, as I said. Refining and refocusing collections is preparatory to both a new ILS system and space planning. A more versatile and attractive ILS will increase patron convenience and staff efficiency. Okay.
And I think it'll also increase loyalty, simply because once you get used to the new system, the new ILS, and you're going to see how nice it is, you're going to say, I don't need to go to another library because, you know, the next one down the road.
Yeah, we do get, you know, we do get phone calls saying, you know, how do I get into, you know, how do I get into my account and access? And we talk people through it, although there are directions right on our webpage. It, it's not clear, it is confusing.
Do you have a schedule or a timeline for, as you said, you're looking into open source versus proprietary? How long do you think that'll take?
If, if the appropriation was made, we'd, we'd go ahead as quickly as we could. We've done a lot of research. We have comparisons. I mean, there are, there are reports annually that evaluate all these different systems. People on my staff have been talking to, you know, to vendors and so forth. So, yeah, we're educating ourselves as quickly as possible, and, you know, which obviously we would have to do if we got the go-ahead to pursue this.
Something, just on, on that point, too, you know, our existing platform, we've had for thirteen years, twelve years at this point. I don't think anybody has a cellphone from 1997 or from even 2007-
Exactly.
If they're still using today. My point in saying that is that, as we think about a new ILS system, I would certainly want to make sure that we are not a penny-wise and a pound foolish, knowing that this system is likely to take us, to have at least a ten-year lifespan, probably in my mind. And so, you know, that's certainly one of the considerations that we'll be making when we think about the ILS system, not just cost, I think, but, you know, how durable, how long-lasting do we think this platform is? Does it connect to other, does it talk to other platforms? I think, I think those are some of the things that we'll be thinking about.
And does it evolve? Yeah.
Can I ask a question on your performance and workload measures? I get a little frustrated with these kind of, and it's just not the library.
Okay.
Because when we talk about, on page 165, circulation of materials, there's, you know, some large numbers there, circulation per capita and things of that nature.
Right.
There's no, I, I don't know what those numbers prove. I mean, is, is circulation per capita at whatever the number is there, six-point-nine for F Y fourteen? Would that be a remarkably high number, or would that be, I mean, how does this all compare-
It's, it's just-
With other numbers in the field of library science? Because I, I mean, I just, otherwise, these numbers are just like looking at baseball statistics.
It's just, I'm sorry. It's just a measure of use, and yes, a larger, busier library would have, you know, larger numbers, but it shows that ours are basically in good shape. They're trending upwards, you know, circulation of materials, how many materials are borrowed in a year, per capita is for, you know, per resident.
Right, I understand.
The in-library use has to do with materials, which we actually do scan and count, that are used in the library but not checked out. So, you know, those are all in our database. They're measures of use that we have all the time, and program attendance is, you know, sort of self-evident. It doesn't necessarily, it doesn't show a comparison to other libraries. If you're talking about the Montgomery County system, yes, they would be much higher.
You can't compare it to the Montgomery County Library System, but what, I guess what I'm saying is that, some, some, when we have these kind of measures-
We need a benchmark, I think, is what you're talking about.
We need benchmarks, and some normative things that would say for, how we compare for small municipal libraries-
Exactly.
Or whatever there is in the field of library science, which I'm utterly ignorant of, and we intend to remain so, but, but it would be helpful. I mean, it's one thing to appreciate an uptrend in usage, but other than that, I just don't get much out of it.
I, I-
And it's not just these, there's other situations throughout our budget like that.
I think certainly we've got some, some work still to do on, on making sure that we do have some benchmarks for some of our, from some of our departments. One of the things I appreciate about our library is that we have lots of data, so I think once we start to get some benchmarks, we have lots of data on circulation, on usage of computers, on book usage by day, by season, and over many years, and so I think once we get some of those benchmarks, it'll be easy to compare.
Especially with a new ILS system.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
I, I would like, if I may, to make the point that we are really unusual, not just because we're a small library, but because we're a small library in an urban area, and I've sort of looked at this before. Small libraries of our size typically are in much more rural areas where people are dependent on them. Here, we're surrounded by huge county systems, so we really are unique in many ways, and that's one of them.
And, and we're certainly unique in the state of Maryland.
Yes, that's true.
Which isn't always to our benefit, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, we can take fraud in it.
We can, but the way defined, the way libraries are defined in this state, the librarians kind of define us as outliers, in, in terms of how the money gets distributed.
And, and according to the Maryland Code, a public library by definition is part of a library system, and that was, you know, part of, there were other independent libraries many years ago, way before my time, that became absorbed by county systems, and thus they were eligible for state funds and the federal funds, which were then available to libraries. So, yeah, our evolution has been unique, too. Silver Spring was once an independent library.
And Noys and Kensington and other ones.
No doubt.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have is Public Works.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's see. Oh. Jumping right into things, we've got the chart there that shows our revenue comparisons between F Y fourteen and fifteen expenditures, our FTE changes and our capital budget items. Just briefly, we've had an increase of one-point-four percent in, in specific revenue that's, comes from outside sources, either highway user revenue funds or fees and sales and permits that we generate ourselves in-house compared to the general fund contribution that, that brings us up to our expenditure rate. We've got a, projecting a two percent increase in our expenditure rate between this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. We're requesting an increase in FTEs, and I'll say more about that in the later slides. One is, two of them, they're actually additional positions. The garden maintenance technician is one in which we currently use temporary labor, and we would like to subtract out the two-thousand-and- year and next fiscal year. We're requesting an increase in FTEs, and I'll say more about that in the later slides. One is, two of them, they're actually additional positions. The garden maintenance technician is one in which we currently use temporary labor, and we would like to subtract out the 2,080 hours of temporary labor would work with us and turn that instead into a full-time position in keeping with the city's policy on, on those matters related to our, our job duties and when we're using someone full-time, to translate that into a full-time position versus a non-benefited position. And then the sustainability coordinator position, which we're actually intending to fill this year, but it wasn't approved in the budget in FY14, and that decision was made in October of last year by the council, once we got the Brendel Sustainable Energy Action Plan. So we're formalizing that in the budget for next year and including that FTE. There's also a position that we'd like to convert from an administrative assistant position to what I'm calling a construction manager. And again, I'll speak more of that in the budgets where it's more directly affected. We've got a total of 21 items that my department will be responsible for in the capital budget related to equipment replacement, street restoration, sidewalk work, parks and facility maintenance, facility improvements.
Sorry, is that the last thing you said you'll talk about later, even though you said you'll talk about it later? Is that the half-time construction manager?
It's actually a full-time, it's a full-time position, just like, thank you. Our administrative assistant, currently, we have an administrative assistant position that's split in the administrative office. They have a portion of their time that was allocated to the admin office, a portion of their time that was allocated to the stormwater fund. We're now proposing for next year, in that same position, turn the job function into a construction manager and allocate their time between the city engineer's budget, 75%, and keep, continue the remaining 25% in the stormwater budget.
Just a follow-up question. I don't quite understand where the sustainability coordinator fits in the budget. It just the...
It's in the administrative.
Okay, so, so the, the FTEs go down because of that person being moved into the engineer?
Because the administrative assistant position.
Okay, thank you.
That was now reflected in the, in the city engineer. In terms of department highlights that we're proposing for next year, we've already talked about the personnel additions. Some of the major initiatives that we'll be jumping into is to implement the Energy Action Plan. And in that category, we're starting our interviews next week. We'll be interviewing six people for the position. They'll be jumping right into the implementation of our Energy Action Plan, which will have a focus on residential, both single-family and multifamily, as well as commercial energy efficiency programs in the community. And in addition to our own plan, we have a partnership with ACEE. They applied for a grant from the state of Maryland, and we partnered with them on that. So we're starting out with a, a program, working together with them, very specifically on multifamily efficiency measures focused on tenant adoption of energy efficiency measures. And they're gonna be comparing various strategies for improving, you know, the interest and the uptake of tenants for efficiency within their buildings. And we'll be focusing on those buildings in Tacoma Park where the tenants pay for their own utilities. So our housing office has that information separated for us, and we use that database in the application for the grant.
What is ACEE?
ACEE, American Council on Energy Efficiency something or other. A local resident is the, the head of that organization, and we're very excited to work together with them on that program.
How many tenants do you estimate this is gonna help?
It'll focus on 18 buildings of 12 units and more.
Okay.
Do some quick math, which it's too late for me to do that without a calculator.
American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The additional initiative will be to expand our food waste collection program, so it's offered citywide. We have a third of the city remaining yet to be included in that program. We'll also continue our partnership with the compost crew on the 500 households that they're currently collecting. So they will continue that into the next year, and our in-house staff will expand to the other parts of the city that have not yet been offered the program.
In general, what are the parts of the city that currently aren't in the program?
Basically, everything from Sligo Creek Parkway to the north. Everything from Sligo Creek Parkway to the south is currently in the city or the compost crew's food waste pilot programs.
It'd be also good to boost the participation rates.
Yes, well, we found, you know, with our first pilot, once we did the second pilot, we offered, went back to those folks for the first pilot to find out if they had any additional interest. And we got another 100 households from that first pilot that, that participated. You know, I was quite surprised when it first started that we only had 25% of the people who we asked to participate, participate. I was assuming we were gonna be 50% or higher. So I think by this time next year, we'll probably be looking closer to those types of participation rates. So I think it was just something that, you know, kind of, people talk to people, neighbors talk to neighbors, and generates more interest.
You know, at a, this is not for maybe the next, the next fiscal year, but at a certain point, you get to a tipping point where you just give everyone a container and they use it or they don't.
Well, we were very interested in the early stages of that program to not make it mandatory, which is very different from the approach we took with the curbside recycling program in the early years, primarily just because the markets are still so young. We didn't wanna taint ourselves and be known as a dirty supplier of, of food waste. So we really wanted to carefully craft our, our product to make sure we're securing our markets and that the participants are really those who want to. And I think once we see our program grow, we can certainly start looking at ways to enhance it and, and promote it in additional ways.
And I can just offer a quick anecdote of how we got an increase from the first pilot with the, coming back and seeing what people in that pilot area might wanna join later. I was one of those, and our reluctance to go in at the beginning was, we couldn't figure out where to put that big bucket inside. And then we realized that we weren't gonna keep that big bucket accessible for tossing stuff into every time we needed an intermediate container.
Yeah.
And once we figured that out, we wanted in.
Ready to go. So, yeah, perhaps even some, you know, shared lessons learned in a kind of a neighborhood captain approach would be a valuable thing to look at when we, when we continue to expand the program.
I don't see the recycling, the upright recycling bins. Is that gonna be in this presentation or is that, are we gonna add more, more money to the, the large upright?
I don't have, I didn't put any budget in for the larger 30-gallon containers.
I believe that Councilmember Mail, I don't believe, Councilmember Mail had a proposal to use unspent sustainability funds from FY14 for that purchase, and I would certainly endorse that, which is subject for some other time than the FY15 budget discussions, but that other time should be soon, I would hope.
And so would I, 'cause I've had residents ask me, "When can I get these containers?"
And since, since we're on the topic that I raised of FY14 unspent sustainability money, we also had a proposal to fund a contractor that would be to do intensive tree planting. The location you had in mind was?
The side of the, excuse me, the compost, the city, you know, the city recycling compost mulch pile area, that valley, that slope.
Yeah, that is not city property, so we'd have to get an agreement with park and planning, and I would not advise any tree planting in that area until we got the invasives under control, and the trees would be dead in a very short amount of time. And that's something we could certainly have a conversation with them about, because the invasive's problem affects our yard and we're constantly battling it. But park and planning does not currently have any active effort to remove invasives.
So maybe what we can do is just think about some other ways to spend some, I mean, 'cause I, I think the intent is if there's a way to do, if there's a way to do some additional programming with those funds in fiscal year 14, so maybe we can think a little bit about that.
Another idea that we have gotten underway, and you'll be hearing about shortly, is we're gonna be holding a household hazardous waste drop-off using those funds. We've identified a contractor through Clean Harbors. Again, this is not for this year's budget, but we, we are actively looking at ways to enhance our sustainability efforts.
Do you have any idea about target date for that?
June 14th.
June 14th, this year?
Yep.
But it's, but it's not this year's money?
It's this year's money, yeah.
It's 14 money?
Yeah, sorry. I'm making everybody confused. You guys got me confused, and I'm jumping on. Let me stick to my FY15 plans.
Can I just say something about the FY14 budget? In thinking about how to spend the sustainability money, can I encourage us to engage some of the students at Piney Branch and the Young Activist Club? This might be an interesting way to engage them in thinking about sustainability and how to spend some of those resources.
I did wanna just, just from a financial perspective, just come back to the expansion of the food waste. Daryl, I know that in the department roundtables, you highlighted the fact that, that, again, similar to recycling, that food waste costs the city money, that it is not a, not even a revenue-neutral transaction, that the city pays for the, the composting and the hauling there, and that the tonnage that we get, we don't get anywhere near the revenue to support that program that the city does pay a cost for that.
Right, right.
And just to follow up on that, we have the compost crew component, and then the city-operated, city staff-operated component. And at some point, figuring out the dollars per hour, dollars per unit cost of those two options, I'm assuming is something you'd come back to us with.
Yeah, we have that now. It's my plan after next year to bring it all in-house. We're basically just phasing up. And I think part of the reason for that is, as we increase the food waste composting, we'll be decreasing the solid waste component. And so then you can start to make route changes and balance out in a way that brings our staffing resources kinda into equilibrium. So that's why we've kinda done a slow approach with the program. Getting back to the slide here on the Flower Avenue-Green Street, we're anticipating the design completion by the end of this, this current year. That's been...
Fiscal year?
Calendar year. That's been either enhanced or complicated, depending on which day it is and what view you have, by our partnership with WSSC, a first ever for us. I don't know if they've done this before, but our design team is, is developing the water main replacement project for that one-mile stretch of Flower Avenue as part of this project. So WSSC pays for that, as well as pays for the construction of that and the design of that, but it'll be integrated into our program, and it will be our contractor, our bidding process, and we'll be overseeing that work. The benefit for us primarily is to ensure that there's not, you know, we get our project finished, and then WSSC comes in and cuts it all up. And also for the residents, means that they're just one period of mass confusion in construction and not, you know, multiple utility construction plans. It will also have somewhat of an effect of, of balancing out costs, you know? There could be ways in which our costs may be lowered, mobilization and whatnot, because the contractor will be doing additional work. I wouldn't say that's the driving factor. It's more convenience and getting it all done at once.
It also means that there aren't two separate entities involved, and there's a lot of pointing back and forth as to, "Well, that's not my responsibility," or "They did that. They screwed it up."
So it will be an interesting, it'll be an interesting process. We're envisioning construction starting in the spring of 2015. We don't yet have our design far enough along. We're about the 60% rate, and we're currently, everything's on hold as we work out issues with WSSC, including the very fine look that they're taking out our environmental site design and our stormwater plans. They're very concerned about bio-retention and the relative closeness or proximity to their sewer and water lines. So we're really having to take a very careful and measured approach with them as we move forward.
Are there, are there any landlords on the eastern side of the streets that have said that they do not want a sidewalk?
There are landlords, property owners, that have refused to give us easements, yeah. So we've had, have to make design adjustments as a result of that.
Okay. And the timing of this project versus the timing of the Sligo, the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure, are they not at the moment?
Hard to know. At this point, it could potentially be the same time. We would not obviously be constructing anywhere near where they are at the time, and we would change our, you know, direction of work, start at the Piney Branch end. Their, last meeting I had with State Highway, they're still looking at 2015 as their construction timeframe, where we end up with that. A lot of it depends on how long the New Hampshire Sligo Creek Parkway Bridge project extends, if it goes all the way till next year. The State Highway's still in design with the Carroll Avenue Bridge project, so it's still under development, has not gone out to bid, and no contractor's been selected.
Is there money in the budget for the Carroll Avenue Bridge project?
Money in our budget?
No, 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 not our budget, the state's.
State Highway has it as an intended project, yeah, yeah.
On the subject of chaos, when the Flower Bridge, the Sligo, Flower Bridge, the Flower Avenue construction started, that, that will result in a complete closure of a section of Flower Avenue at a time, or not.
I don't know if we'll completely close the road. We will certainly have flagmen and a traffic control plan. There may be detours, there may be single lane.
I appreciate it's too early for you to even hazard a guess about that, but then I was talking, we were talking to Mike Madden at MTA this morning about the schedule for the Purple Line, and because the Purple Line's gonna be built by one, the partnership that's gonna be bidding, those bids are gonna be opened in the fall, the contract will be signed soon after that, and construction will start, he doesn't know when, in 2015, nor where. 'Cause he was saying if the state was building it, they would probably have an inkling of where they'd actually be building it. And so if they start construction up in the RLS area, then it's just gonna add to the traffic contortions. Just something to be aware of, is all I'm saying.
Traffic may detour all the way around and outside of it, and maybe will help in a more positive way. If I can just continue through the slide, 'cause you've got the police to go after me. The Safe Grow Act implementation, we, the, the law becomes effective to property owners and tenants as of January 1st in 2015, so we'll be preparing in this next fiscal year promotional and educational materials in that regard. We currently have our program in effect for commercial applicators. We provided notice. We've sent out two warning notices so far for folks who did not comply with the city's law by not posting our required sign. And so I would encourage anyone who sees the little yellow state required pesticide flags on lawns to give us a call, 'cause they should also be seeing a city notice of pesticide application in compliance with the law at the same time. And if they aren't, then they need to give us a call, and we'll follow up with the commercial applicator as well as the property owner. Terms of major construction projects planned for next year, we'll have two playground construction projects. We'll be coming to you shortly for a bid award for a design contract, so we're assuming the construction will take place in the next fiscal year, once the design is completed this year. We're currently in the design phase for seven different new sidewalks, mostly in Ward 2 and Ward 3. Those streets are listed there. I can't say that all those sidewalks will be constructed, 'cause we do have the voting process that we'll go through once a final design is selected. But we have started the community input process. The designs have been initially developed, and we've had meetings, and, or soon, we'll have meetings with the neighborhood associations and the residents affected. And providing these go through, we'll be scheduling construction on those sidewalks. We have the new sidewalk design in the 1,000 block of Elm Avenue that's in the queue waiting for design development. And again, based on interest there, if we can achieve a design in a short period of time, it could potentially be constructed in the next fiscal year as well. We know of one traffic calming construction project at Flower Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway that's currently in design now. And we intend to continue our ADA sidewalk compliance program working in the areas south of Elm Avenue. We've kinda worked ourself up to Westmoreland and down Elm, and so we'll be proceeding. We do intend this fiscal year to work on Allegheny Avenue between Elm and Second. We're trying to do-si-do with WSSC. They'll be repaving the street after a water main project. We'd like to get in there and do the sidewalk work, so then, once they do the paving, everything's done, and the street'll look great. And then lastly, Dog Park Design and Construction, we're assuming that will take place in FY15 as well.
When you say "south of Elm," that's toward New Hampshire?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you just go back to the Allegheny and the do-si-do that we're doing? And anything to kinda report on that?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the WSSC's contractor on-site just to confirm that they weren't gonna be coming in and paving right at the same time we have our contractor queued up to do the sidewalk work. They confirmed that they're gonna be coming back, they thought, in August to do the final permanent patchwork that's required prior to their contractor leaving the site. And then WSSC has all its paving done by Eastern Paving, so then they'll be led... has all its paving done by Eastern Paving. So then they'll be letting a contract with, given the go-ahead to Eastern Paving to do the milling and paving. And they said that they are now instituting a new program, avoiding a year after the trench work is patched, permanently patched, before they come back in and mill and pave. So it could be in 2015 that the street will be paved. And that affects not only Allegheny Avenue, but we have a number of streets, particularly in your ward, that are currently undergoing the nightmare of WSSC construction. All those streets, we permit the utilities to work in the city right away. WSSC is kind of a unique entity, and then they're not required to get a city permit, because of the type of agency they are, but, and good community working relationships. They do consult with us, and they do comply with our permits. And it's been a standard part of our permit process now for any utility. If they're going to do a significant amount of cuts to the street, we require that they mill and pave the road and restore its full surface. So that's just become our standard permit condition over the last, I'd say, three years or so.
Just one other question on the sidewalks. The quality of the materials, you and I have emailed about this. I didn't know if there was any follow-up regarding some of already, sort of the crumbling and pebbling that you can notice on Sycamore, over on Jackson, leading down to Sligo Creek, on Grant, and I'm sure there's probably other places as well.
Yeah, we think that's largely the condition of the weather in the winter last year, which was pretty extreme. That's the same issue that we've seen and have talked about with public works folks all over the jurisdiction. We're quite confident that our contractor, as well as our inspection process, has ensured that we don't have an inadequate process going on with regard to sidewalks themselves, and we can offline chat about that. But the city now has an inspector, a third-party inspector, and that's been a part of our program ever since we started doing sidewalk work that oversees the contractor. So they make sure the concrete hasn't aged too much, its temperature is not wrong, it's, you know, not sat in the truck too long, that the finishers aren't doing the finishing incorrectly. So everything that's going on is being done by our specs and our standards, and we're having it inspected to ensure that. I think there are conditions, and I've been noticing it everywhere I go now, where we've had concrete that's been in fine shape for five years, that's now starting to spall. And we've had some that's relatively new that's starting to spall. I think it's really just an impact of the weather and the conditions that we experienced this winter. Structurally, the concrete is fine, so we don't typically go out and remove it unless there's a serious case of spall. And that usually means that there's something else that's gone drastically wrong with the concrete mix, when you get, you know, large chunks of the sidewalk, and you'll usually see cracking and things like that. But with just that top level coming off, it's not something that we would remove or replace.
Can you just talk for a minute about capacity? You're talking about converting the admin position to the construction manager. And if you go back a page on your chart there, and you talk about all the construction projects, just give us a sense of how doing all of these fits with what you're, you know, kind of, the fact that you couldn't, it would seem that you can't do it with the construction management that you have currently in place, so that you're increasing your capacity to do that. When you increase your capacity to do that, how does this work match up with that capacity?
Well, our workload will continue to be very intense, as it has been for the past, I don't know how many years I can think. So we'll be continuing with the same workload and pace. The primary difference and the main driver behind switching an administrative assistant to a construction field manager is to get me out of the field. I am overseeing well over 60-plus percent of the construction projects that the city undertakes. And so I can't do what else I need to do as a result of being in the field overseeing the construction. So this is a way to try to address that and make sure we have a highly skilled person who does construction for a living, overseeing the construction projects, and just, you know, build on that and continue to improve our ability to manage multiple contracts and multiple work. And then I'll go back to the job of running the department and doing the administrative and oversight and planning that has really been done kind of quickly and without as much thought and energy as I would like.
And in terms of the mix of things, because there's going to be the Flower Avenue-Green Street, and there's going to be sidewalk construction and playground construction, and these things all tend to happen in the construction season, which is only part of the year. And so even with this new person, as all of these things get put into the mix, because the Flower Avenue-Green Street isn't kind of an ongoing one, you know, really the only one that is kind of an ongoing type of thing is rolling through on the playground construction. The sidewalk construction, at some point, is going to, we're going to reach the end of it. Ability to deal with, if the Dog Park design and construction got accelerated, how does that fit into your intended work plan for this person to deal with all those projects?
Everything that we've got here displayed on this, it's this slide, I'm quite confident that we can accomplish with the existing staff resources, with the construction manager, the city engineer, myself. The special projects coordinator will be back from her maternity leave the end of May. So I feel quite certain that we can continue to provide the kind of oversight and program planning that we have.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to jump through to the next slide. Additional capital expenditures, I won't make say much time there, other than, these are some of the 21 items that weren't on the previous slide that are now on this one in terms of equipment replacement, facility improvements, and street resurfacing. Because I've heard it mentioned before, I just want to say there will be a couple other items out of the facility maintenance reserve, in addition to the two space planning discussions that you've talked about, one the library, one the police, that'll be coming up later. We also will be doing some design process with an architect for interior space improvements, space use improvements in this building, as well as some replacement of things like the wooden doors in the building that are not holding up well, and replacement of a drinking fountain, preferably in this lobby, with one that has the water bottle fill option. And installing a sink with a disposal in the staff lounge, so that staff have the ability to wash dishes and have greater use of staff lounge for lunches and whatnot, and that we have less sink clogging in other parts of the building. That street resurfacing list, I feel it's my duty to say, this list may change. This is just a best guess at this point. This early out, it's really difficult to be held to that list. This is our best guess at this point, based on the pavement condition survey work that we had done previously. Utility conflicts, other projects, things that we don't know about yet will come up that may bump something on the list, or turn something else that wasn't on the list into a priority. So right now, this is just kind of a working list of the streets that we intend to
Have the Erskine Street done until this fiscal year, because they started their
Sidewalk work.
Today.
This is FY15?
Street repaving.
Oh.
This is the FY15 street resurfacing.
This is just for street resurfacing. Excuse me.
Moving on, I assume there'd be some interest in specifically what the $250,000 that we've had in past budget, this current budget, for sustainability funding, how we're looking to spend that next fiscal year. Our current plan is laid out there, includes the personnel costs, the food waste composting program, both the continuation of the existing one and the expansion, assumed consulting support role either through Brandell or others for the Energy Action Plan, additional unprogrammed sustainability work, and the Safe Grow implementation. So that's currently what's on the queue for that, those dollars, and what we're intending to spend our sustainability budget on. This slide.
Daryl, I wonder, just for the slide, I wonder if I can just give a little bit of, sorry, if you go to the Dog Park slide.
No, sorry.
Dog Park slide. Just a little bit of context, because I know that I've gotten some emails about accelerating the pace of Dog Park construction and so forth, and I just wanted to really just talk about this slide and also sort of bring out three points. One is obviously that the city has a fiduciary responsibility with the money that we have. We want to make sure that we spend our money wisely as it relates to thinking about the deployment, really, of any park, whether that's for playground for children, or whether that's, in this case, for the contemplation of a Dog Park. Two is just to remind everyone that unless I have missed something in my budget review, that the city has not allocated any money previously to support a Dog Park, that this is really the first time that the city that has been proposed to fund money to support a Dog Park will be in the fiscal year 15 budget. And then, sort of the final thing is, which is really the first part of this timeline chart, which is that, you know, really since, I think, the first week that I started, I think the first, one of the first presentations that I heard was on Dog Park. And what I heard from the city council at that time was that it was something that we needed to look at. And from that, I think we have been working tirelessly with many of the advocates that are out there, including Tacoma Dogs, to look at how we might be able to sort of develop the ideas around a potential Dog Park for Tacoma Park. Even though, it should be acknowledged that there is a Dog Park that's already located in Tacoma Park. It is on private property. I don't think that it's publicly accessible, but there is a dog run that does exist in Tacoma Park right now. You know, really, from May, as this timeline shows, sorry, from May 2013, really through the beginning of the fiscal year, through July, what I think you can see is that there's been a host of meetings, as well as discussion, to try to make sure that we knock down as many pins or impediments as possible. We've met with park and planning. We have gone to potential Dog Park locations. We have talked to Montgomery County, who is also, obviously, in the process of thinking about Dog Park development. We have worked with some stakeholder groups who have donated time and energy to thinking about some potential locations and doing some preliminary site work, perhaps in some potential locations. One of the things I wanted to draw your attention to is really starting in April and May, we feel like in order to put out a process that incorporates some community input, as well as get some council input, that in May, we wanted to come back to council and have a discussion on some Dog Park locations. I think I realize that we probably haven't come back to the council to actually talk about potential locations. We think that there, I think, is some evidence and maybe some advantage to some of the sites, and so we'd like to talk a little bit about that. We've also got an opportunity to, once we get an idea about where the location is most likely to go, to start spending some city dollars on doing some site survey and geotechnical analysis of the site. I will point out that we don't have solid, we need to make sure that we have terra firma that is buildable. Some of the locations that I think we'll be talking to you about were former landfill sites, and so there may be a lot of loose material, other things that we need to consider as we think about building out a potential Dog Park. After that, we wanted to obviously have some community input into the location. We understand that we've got some very passionate people, as I have learned throughout Tacoma Park, that will be obviously very supportive of Dog Park, as the city is. But there's obviously probably going to be some community concerns about some items, so we just want to make sure that that, that we have an opportunity to hear all of that. We may have, we may have to get, dependent upon the site, joint use agreement from Montgomery County, from, sorry, from Montgomery County, if that's needed. We have perhaps some options as it relates to design, which we can talk about a little bit when we talk about the location. We have an offer to have some of that design perhaps donated to the city, and so that could, and that helps to shorten the timeframe a little bit in terms of when we think we might be able to move forward. Have an opportunity to talk a little bit about design, and then really get into final construction drawings, doing an RFP for that, awarding that, and then moving forward with potential construction. What you'll see in the budget is about $50,000. And to be perfectly honest, that's really just an earmark, I think, for what we think is going to be a, hopefully a good number for a Phase 1 estimate for construction of a park. You know, we've, without really knowing the full design and without knowing some additional information about, in particular the geotechnical analysis, it's difficult to say exactly today what that number's going to be. But we certainly want to make sure that we've got a number out there. That number was based on some preliminary estimates that we have around fencing and some site work, and it was really just sort of a guesstimate. But we want to make sure that we've got a marker out there in fiscal year 15 to be able to move forward. And so I just wanted to provide just a little bit of context for folks, because I've gotten lots of emails. I'm sure you all have gotten lots of emails. And I wanted to make sure that we, that I, from the city's perspective at least, think about this from the fiduciary responsibility. And, you know, I would go through these same exact steps if I was doing a park for kids. And I feel the obligation to try to make those processes as similar as possible. I think there may be some ways to accelerate some of these items, but I certainly wouldn't want to cut out too many steps if we need to do them.
So you have stakeholder meetings. When specifically do you envision holding meetings with the people in the neighborhoods surrounding the candidate locations?
When?
Yes, what dates?
I do not know, but right now, it's preliminarily targeted for June.
So you would not have that before a city council meeting. I'd actually advocate mayor, having a public hearing for people to make statements before the council. And in order to inform people prior to a public meeting, I'm sorry, a public hearing, it would be very helpful to have people see the sites. For instance, I got a copy, because I asked for it, from Tacoma Dogs, of a design, an architectural design, and it's totally without context, no surrounding streets, structures, buildings, or anything like that. And it makes it very hard to envision the site. The candidate site that we discussed near the Darwin Avenue parking lot, you'll recall in an earlier council meeting, I was very confused about it because of the difficulty in understanding exactly where it was and who owned the different pieces of the property. So I would ask that this overall timeline, you know, if that's realistic, it's probably realistic, that the meeting with the immediate neighbors onsite happened prior to a council meeting, and that the council meeting included a public hearing.
I mean, I'd just jump in and say that, you know, going back to the very first presentation we had from Tacoma Dogs about the Dog Park, what they envisioned was five or six, I think they called them pocket parks around the city. And to me, I would rather see a city approach that's more faithful to that. We've somehow gotten onto this idea of sort of one big park, was what I feel like, where I feel like we've ended up. So, for example, I remember one of the sites was, that was considered, was the PG Avenue site. One of the reasons it was, it had a mark against it, let's say, was there was inadequate parking. I note that right around the corner is Forest Park, which has absolutely no parking whatsoever for kids and adults. Yet it works fine. It works fine, because we have lots of parks in the city, so everybody doesn't have to go to one park. And I guess, you know, my sense with this is, we've just met, and to the city manager's comment about, we have, you know, one private Dog Park in the city. I've got one in my backyard, too. It's a fenced yard that sometimes has three dogs in it, and two or three or four kids. And I just feel like somehow this project has gotten very complicated, where I've heard conversations about astroturf and terracing and fencing. And, you know, those all suggest to me that we're, we're sort of getting beyond the, maybe what really, people really want, which is just a place for their dogs to run around, and for people, for the humans who are there, to stand around the fence and get to know one another. And so you need a fence for people's elbows and arms, and you need a place for dogs to run. And a lot of the other stuff seems to me that we could go forever with making a project more and more complicated.
I think that illustrates the range of Dog Parks. I mean, everybody's seen really, really top-notch Dog Parks that have water and, you know, some sort of, I don't know if it's astroturf, but, you know, some sort of synthetic turf. And so that's sort of on one end, and then there are options, I think, for the other end.
I know that the Tacoma Dogs people have said very recently that they'd be content, at least for starters, with fencing and either wood chips or gravel to take care of ground surface issues. And, you know, if that's not going to cause any kind of problem for the neighbors who live near where the thing would be sited, then that would seem to be adequate. We don't need to overbuild, I agree.
I guess my sense in looking at this timeline is, my assumption is that the envisioned May City May city council meeting would be to bring back the analysis that gives some of the broad range of options and identifies some things and enables us to then potentially say, well, then we should have a community meeting with this neighborhood or that neighborhood based on what we've seen.
I certainly think that, that we have not come back to the council yet with some of our more specific analysis and some of the information that we've learned from Park and Planning and Montgomery County and so forth. And Tacoma Dogs has been very helpful in getting a lot of this information. They've helped us tremendously with cost information and some other stuff, and so we've got, I think we've got some data to potentially talk about.
Yeah, because I think we've gotten bits and pieces of information from different people at different times, and we need to kind of pull it all together and get the council up to speed on where these things are so that we can feel comfortable with the direction to go forward without having made any decision we need to be briefed.
You know, again, I try to look at the, at the big picture for this, which is that we are trying to commit to doing a dog park in some way, shape, form, or fashion in fiscal year 15, and that has not been done thus far. And so that's, that is the point of whether this, you know, the timeline is obviously going to move over as we sort of learn more information, but intent is to move forward with the dog park in fiscal year 15.
I guess my feeling on this, two points, is that, let's keep in mind, we're talking about dogs here, and, you know, dogs have been managing to survive in Tacoma Park for a few hundred years without a, without a park. And I don't, I don't mean to sound cynical, because I have a dog that needs space to run and would dearly love to have a dog park in the city. But I just, I appreciate the sense of wanting to get this thing done as quickly as possible. But that's true of trying to get some sidewalks built in my ward where residents have waited three to four years in some cases. And I just don't want us to get hurried up unreasonably. And it sounds like there's so many variables here that need to be brought together. You know, the number of dog parks, like Councilmember Mail was just talking about, as well as the location. The other point would be is that let's be careful that when we, if we start to, say, show, take residents to look at park locations, that we are satisfied that those are locations where a dog park could actually be built. Because I don't want to get us the cart in front of the horse where we get people all excited and then we come back with the geotechnical analysis and say, it's not going to work, we can't do it. I mean, we have to get that step done first before we start offering alternatives.
I would just like to say that I'm happy with the timeline. I think that we need to make sure we do this right. Even if we add other dog parks in the future, we need to make sure the first one is right.
The question that remains for me is, what does Phase One construction mean? You've got Phase One construction, spring 2015. So if that's just clearing five trees, but still an unoccupiable dog park, then it's not really a, you know, it's not a dog, there's not a dog park after Phase One.
Yeah.
Versus if it's, as Councilmember Grimes said, it's the fence and the mulch, but not the, whatever the next bells and whistles are.
I think that this, this schedule here probably assumes that there's some site prep, that there is some, some level of construction that hap, maybe, maybe small, some level of construction, some level of fencing and so forth. But again, I just, similar to how our Public Works Director prefaces putting things out, so this is an anticipated schedule, but I think once we get some sense about location, when we get some sense about design, I think I'll have a much better idea. I'm in April right now, and I think that by June and July, we'll have a much better idea about exactly what the timeline is. And again, that is still before the beginning of the fiscal year, for fiscal year 15.
I agree with Councilmember Smith regarding the need to do it right, and I have found that it is just about always preferable, in doing it right, to fully inform and consult my constituents and not just to have meetings with one community group and not have meetings with all interested community groups, which is what has happened in the course of the time since the fall. The city staff have met with Tacoma Dogs three, something like that. When have you met with the residents of the neighborhoods that are closest to the two leading, well, the one leading candidate site?
Again, we have not, because we have not chosen a location yet.
So I'm asking you to do that soon.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that I would like to get some sense from the council about which locations, when we present the information to you all, we should be really contemplating, because there may be an idea for more than one park that we haven't thought about yet. I think that's probably the best time in my mind to go out and talk to residents that are potentially going to be impacted, is when we have a good idea about which locations we should be zeroing in on.
Right, but Tacoma Dogs has gone ahead and done preliminary site designs with an architect of one particular site. Where did they get the idea that that one particular site was the leading candidate?
I think we have some clear, as I said, I think that we have, in terms of the locations we've looked at, I think that there may be a site that we think has some clear advantages.
Okay, you're equivocating here. There is a particular site.
I'm not equivocating.
It's off Darwin Avenue. I would like to have a meeting soon with the residents near the Darwin Avenue site. I don't anticipate any problems, although there's one person I know of who, you know, comes up with all kinds of objections, but he's one person. I don't anticipate problems, but it is the right process to consult the people in the areas immediately adjacent to the leading candidate location.
I agree with you, and I'm not arguing that. What I'm saying is just that it is on our schedule to do just that.
So are you saying that you haven't had technical analysis of the site yet, so that you guys can say, staff can say, that this is a good site?
I want to be clear, because I still think that there's some, perhaps there's some misunderstanding about this, that we're in fiscal year 14, and we have been talking to people about this site. We haven't spent really any city money on this yet, and we need to spend city money to be able to better educate ourselves, geotechnical, site survey, and so forth. So I'm looking for some direction from the council.
And there is more than one site. I mean, I think we need to be clear with stakeholders that, and that there's a number of different sites that have been talked about. A number of those sites aren't real options, but we need to kind of go through that. And there are at least two sites that we should be talking about and get some direction on. And then we've got a lot of, I think, communications with the community to find out, are those reasonable?
Just to Councilmember Grimes' point, if, if you were to have a meeting with a neighborhood such as Darwin Avenue this weekend, would you have things that you could tell them? Or would you, or would it be kind of too soon to have the meeting, meaning they were saying, would they be saying, well, you know, what are you talking about? Because I'm trying to figure out, because there's obviously different perceptions of what could be, what could be.
It's not just tell them, of course, it's listen to them.
Right, but, but to listen to them, it would be general concerns about if there were a dog park in their neighborhood at all, and then some of those questions might be more toward the direction of, well, you know, I would be concerned if it was going to be here because that's closer, and I have concerns because of the closeness, versus farther away. Are there general things that could be gone over with potential sites, or does it need more specific information?
I would certainly feel like I need more specific information in order to adequately talk. I mean, right now, again, the city has not spent any money to identify some of the more technical aspects of any of these sites. We have had lots of conversations, and we have some information to share. And so that's just my feeling.
Because I'm asking that because it's a, it's a symptom that I'm familiar with from many projects going over many years, that there's always concerns by people of, well, why didn't you come to me sooner so I could have given you my information? Oh, you came to me too soon, why don't you wait until you have information? There's this whole continuum of things, and getting the exact right point for a certain group or a certain individual is not easy.
So, but what you're saying is, is that clearly, right now, the city is definitely not prepared or ready to have any community meetings on sites.
I am saying that it would be, the most that we could tell people at this point is that this is a site that we're entertaining. Again, we've had some donated, donated design, which, again, the city has not met with the design entity yet to talk specifically about that. We've had some preliminary conversations around fencing and some other things, but other than say that this is a potential site, we don't have a survey for the site, so we don't exactly know where the boundaries would be. We don't know where water lines are and so forth.
There's a lot of questions you just can't answer.
We are in fiscal year 14, and we have not spent any money to date.
It wasn't because the council was unwilling to allocate money. I think the council was willing to allocate money. I think it was because staff wasn't yet ready to spend the money because of capacity questions.
What I know is that there's no money in the fiscal year 14 budget.
I would, I would pass a budget amendment next week, well, two readings, you know, if it were a matter of, if staff had capacity to accelerate this.
I think what you see is that we would actually be spending money in fiscal year 14 in May, potentially to do site survey and geotechnical analysis of the site. So we're prepared to spend money in fiscal year 14.
I just add that I would support spending that money in fiscal year 14. I support the, the idea here of us having a meeting to talk with city staff and hear about the next steps, which I think you have for May, and I support community meetings being held shortly after that to move forward. The thing I would add to this is, my general sense is that I would rather see a less expensive dog park done more quickly, and that is not because I don't want to do it right, it's because I don't believe that right should be more expensive than three playgrounds and four sidewalks combined. I mean, that's, you know, I'm exaggerating, but in terms of balancing, as Councilmember Schultz said, it's about dogs, and it's about, it's, you know, we're not, we're not building the Taj Mahal for them. So I was just trying to say that faster may still be right.
So it sounds like, for the moment, for FY15 budget purposes, this timeline is helpful and is the first that we've seen this subject, and it envisions spending money in FY14 that we will probably, that we might have to do it a budget amendment for.
Likely, correct.
Regarding the money, is there any element here of the phasing and timing of the money, given the project open space? I mean, we have a balance on project open space, and we can spend that one, we are ready to spend it, is that correct? Program Open Space.
I'm sorry, I thought you were leading in. We do have some project open space programs.
Program Open Space.
Already planned, both for this year and next year. Colby and Sligo Mill overlook design this year, construction next year. We have not yet heard what our balance is in the program open space dollars. The process is that we send an annual list of projects to the county, and it gets in, you know, they identify them as our potential list of projects that we want to spend our money on, and then we have to, you know, confirm with them and get a letter of concurrence for any potential future spending of money, and then we have to apply and submit the paperwork for any time we do move forward on a project. So we'll have a little bit more information shortly about what our balance is in program open space and how far that'll go, whether that's just going to cover Colby and, and Sligo Mill, or whether it's not. We also have another option of community parks and playgrounds, which is a 100% grant source. However, in order to apply for those funds, you have to have a completed design. So potentially, Sligo or Colby could be queued into a community parks and playgrounds after we have the design this year, but again, it won't be anything that we'll be able to predict. We'll have to try and see what we end up with.
And any, any potential project that hasn't been submitted for program open space, in order to get it, to use program open space, there's a whole process that takes a good bit of time that you, that I think you just described, that would be required.
Yeah, the council approves the annual.
So that just kind of saying, oh, well, if we want to shift it over here, you can't do that.
Right, that's true. But we did, though, did file for a letter of concurrence on a dog park with a, with no site listed. And what this allows us to do is, if indeed at some point we are able to use program open space funds for a project, the expenses that we will be even spending perhaps this year could get reimbursed at the 75% level. So, you know, we did at least take the step so that our, you know, we may be able to get reimbursed for what we're doing now.
So we have, we have options.
That's right.
Yeah. And some of this will depend on how much our allocation is going to be, which is always a guessing game. Depends on what the county wants to do. Could I move forward?
So you're dying to move off the slide?
Yes, I would like to move off this. You have seen this slide before, so I'm assuming you don't need to talk about it anymore, but in case someone's dying to talk about reserves, our equipment replacement reserve and facilities maintenance reserve and their year-end balances. Moving on to stormwater management, unless there's other questions related to the Public Works operating budget or capital budget.
Hang on a second. No, they're later on. Building maintenance.
I had a question about the gardens, and I didn't know if, I just didn't get a chance to read it all, but I noticed that there were 14 gardens, new gardens projected for FY15. Do you know where they'll be, or?
No, that was an estimate from the city gardener based on areas where he's either planning to enhance existing beds or relative to new bio-retention facilities that they would then assist with the establishment of. So yet, nothing's been identified that I'm aware of. He may know specifically. If he does, I can get you the list, but I think it's just an estimate.
Okay. Shane, we'll go into my questions now. I know that the.
If you can tell me page number, that's what I was.
Yeah, I'm looking at page 86, the Performance workload measures for building maintenance. The, the prior year's budget, the, last year's budget had 2012 numbers in it, FY 2012 numbers in it. So we spent $65,000 in 2012 on expenditures for facility maintenance by contractor, and also contractor hours dedicated to cleaning and staff hours dedicated to cleaning were only 32. So it's a big change here, and I just, it may, you don't have to answer it now, but I'm just.
One was an error, the 32 was an individual person. We have four custodians, so it ended up showing 32 hours based on one person instead of multiplied by four. We've also added the weekend cleaning, which, again, I would feel remiss if I didn't tell you I shrunken my chair at the thought of coffee in the library. Not until we have a different floor and no upholstered chairs, otherwise I'll be hearing about how horrible the library looks from all the coffee stains. So it all depends on where you're coming from. But, yeah, so that was an error in numbers, and the weekend cleaning, we contract weekend cleaning on Saturday and Sunday, four to five hours each day with a firm that does our custodial work over the weekend.
And that was new for FY14?
Yeah, that was included in the fiscal year 14.
So just curious, the jump in expenditures for facility maintenance by contractor from 65 and 12 to 192 and 13 to 253 and 50, and that's a, that's a, that's a progression over five, four years of, so I know we switched to contractors one of those years, but we've had two big jumps.
It's, it's been a mix. We've had a number of equipment failure problems this year that's reflected in that, in that number. And I can give you specifics of kind of how that broke out, but we have had a number of problems. One of the things that our energy audit helped us to identify is those existing rooftop and air handler units that are costing us more than they're worth in more ways than one. So part of what we hope to do with the grant funds is continue to accelerate the replacement of those pieces of equipment.
And then my other set of questions are on page 89, the equipment maintenance. And I would just note that the first two management objectives there ensure that at least 90% of the city's fleet is operational and return calls for service are less than 2%. But those aren't, I couldn't, those don't, those measures are not actually reflected in the performance workload measures down below, nor is there any indication whether we're achieving that goal, as were the same goals from the previous two years' budget?
Yeah.
So, you know, some indication of.
I get quarterly reports from the equipment maintenance supervisor that tells me how many vehicles were out of service, in service, so it's something we track internally. It would be a little hard to give a full year number, but. It would be a little hard to give a full year number, but we could give it a try. It really wouldn't mean anything to anybody else but us, probably.
Okay, well, I just.
But we selected those numbers years ago as part of our process of trying to do performance measures relative to other jurisdictions, and, and those were the top jurisdictions' levels of performance, so that's what we selected to be. We, we more than meet them.
Okay. Fair enough. I just, I'm not wed to them, but if we put them in there, we should, we should put data back in. Thank you.
This slide is, shows the annual revenues, expenditures, and full-time equivalents that we are anticipating for the stormwater budget. I just want to say that the increase in the revenue line from 14 to 15 is entirely as a result of our National Fish and Wildlife Federation grant, minus some reductions in our anticipated interest earnings from the fund over time, as well as a slowdown we've had in stormwater permit fees. So the, the grant is $168,000. The percentage increase is something slightly less than that because of those other reductions in interest earnings and permit fees. The increase in expenditures, again, similarly, is due to the anticipated work starting on the Flower Avenue and Green Street project. That's largely the CDBG portions and some of the beginning construction work, plus increases in personnel cost. One of the impacts of shifting from an administrative assistant to a construction manager is their rate of pay is assumed to be higher, so there's some additional personnel-related costs. And planned system repairs and maintenance costs, as well as bank fees, were increased between 14 and 15. So those all together equal that 62% increase between FY14 and 15 in expenditures. Getting into some of the details of what we've got planned, we've spoken before about how our personnel hours are, are used within the stormwater budget, half of the time of the city engineer, 0.4 of the special projects coordinator, and 25% of our now new construction manager is allocated to that budget. Major initiatives in terms of projects we'll be working on will be the construction of bio-retention facilities for the Flower Avenue and Green Street project. We clean and video inspect every year. We do a third to a quarter of the system. So next fiscal year, we'll be working on Sub Basin 1 and a portion of Sub Basin 2. We'll be doing seasonal maintenance of our bio-retention facilities by contractor. One of the contracts you all approved this year was for us to bring in a contractor to help us oversee the bio-retention facilities in terms of making sure they're functioning as they're supposed to function, and helping us to identify ways to improve them if they're not, as well as water quality testing of the dry weather outfalls. It's something we do annually just to track coliform and other types of nutrients and whatnot that we find in the water quality.
Are we still working with UMD to do the storm sewer testing?
The Center for Water Shed, yes, yes. We have some funds left from this year. I was just talking with their person, their staff person has changed that would, had originally been working with us, so we're discussing kind of what we want to do next, but we're anticipating continuing working with them on illicit discharge and detection systems. In terms of system repair, we break out some of our major construction related to stormwater as existing system repair, as well as then construction of new facilities. So the major repair projects are a stream stabilization project at Hayward Avenue and March Avenue, on that pathway that goes down to Sligo Creek Parkway from Hayward and March. We have a stream bank erosion, serious stream bank erosion going on there. So we're really excited.
Is that the one that I was speaking about, was it last month?
Not often to New Hampshire Avenue, no.
Okay.
That, that is a state highway issue that we brought to their attention with photos and videos on several occasions and have not yet been able to generate any interest.
But it's something you are worried about.
Yes, we're aware and worried, and it's encroaching under New Hampshire Avenue. They're going to have a serious problem.
Because the water is still, even though it hasn't rained for a few days, the water's still crossing the sidewalks.
Yeah. We're also looking at a slope stabilization project at Flower Avenue and Cherry Avenue, the dead end, and then Glengarry Place drainage, soil improvements. We did some work on that a couple of years ago. It's not working. We're going to enhance it and add to it, try to get some improvement into the drainage so we don't have the erosion along the edge of the street. In terms of construction of new facilities, those four projects are on our list, our capital list, a bio-retention facility at 6504 Fourth Avenue, which is an existing traditional stormwater inlet that we want to turn into a bio-retention area. Allegheny and Second Avenue, pipe realignment. We're slowly working our way around the city. We have some old trenches, some of which go under people's houses, which isn't an ideal situation, so we want to reroute them to the right-of-way when we can and when it's doable, and this is a project that the city engineer's been thinking about for quite a while. We're intending to build a bio-retention facility at Larch and Glazewood Avenues and that big expanse of pavement. So we're hoping to narrow that intersection and improve, it leads into that area that Fred was talking about. There's a stormwater inlet on the opposite side of the street that then leads into a stream that is now cresting over New Hampshire Avenue when it rains a lot. And lastly, an infiltration facility at the bottom of our driveway on Ritchie Avenue. I just want to also add that there will be other stormwater treatment facilities that we'll be building next fiscal year as a result of any new sidewalk projects. So anytime we add impervious surface, we have to concurrently meet our requirement and the state requirement for treatment of 100% of the runoff from those new impervious areas. We have funded those through the capital budget for the sidewalk budget, so any tree replanting or stormwater work is paid for out of that and not the stormwater utility fee. Once that facility gets established, then the maintenance costs transfer over to, to the stormwater utility fee and now become a part of our ongoing maintenance. So I think with that, I am done.
I'll have some questions if you're looking for questions. Let's see if I can find myself oriented here. Trying to pick out the ones that are important. On page 92, right-of-way maintenance, where we talk about management objectives, this is a similar question that Councilmember Mail just asked. Maintain roadway markings and crosswalks on city streets, repainting on a schedule of no fewer than two times per year. The next one is respond to pothole reports, et cetera, within 24 hours of receipt, and respond to all non-emergency service requests within 10 working days. Again, those measurements aren't down under the performance, but so I'd like them to be, if it's reasonable for that to be the case in future budgets. But as for now, are those three standards, ones that, that your department is achieving?
Those are certainly our goals and what the depart, what the divisions are required to meet. We do not have the capacity to track that at this point in time. We don't have a work order system. We don't have any way to track both receipt as well as completion of tasks. So I would be unable to produce data in that regard.
So it's, it's a vision or, or an ambition, but obviously the.
It's our standard operating procedure.
Yeah. Okay. But you can't track it. So somewhere along the way, I guess you're going to want to be able to track that, or would like to be able to do that. I get that. You, page 95, you talk about something I didn't know we did, is provide collection services at the door or porch for residents who are handicapped or elderly. Is that something that's well-publicized and is the, is, are we increasing the number, you know, identifying more and more people?
It's actually, the number have fallen over the years.
It's fallen?
Mm-hmm. When we first went from our behind-the-house trash collection service to curbside collection service, we had a great number of people who we maintained behind the house or garage or porch collection for. Our, our number of, of those types of ser, places where we provide that service is greatly reduced from year to year.
Is it something you proactively try to let people know about?
People generally call us to make that request.
Oh, so I just wondered if people know that they can do that? That's the thing I would be interested to.
We have residents with high expectations and, and intense levels of service expectation, so I doubt that anybody would, would not feel able to call and ask.
All right. I, I trust the accuracy of your statement on that, because I can't disagree with it. Something that our city manager talked about a little earlier, when on solid waste management, on page 97, you talk about the cost of do, of these, our expenditures for disposal and processing of materials, including $190,000 for solid waste tipping fees and singles, and also additional money for single stream. Because I think sometimes people sort of think that we make money off of recycling, going back to the old days, when, 20 years ago, when, you know, we'd have newspaper drives so that we could sell, you know, find somebody to pay for this, the materials and make revenue. But, but in general, it's not, that's not the case, is it?
No, no. In terms of the infrastructure costs, equipment, salaries of personnel, maintenance of equipment, insurance, as well as the processing fees, it's, it's not anything that you can make money on.
Yeah, and I, I just think that's important to emphasize, because while we all are enthusiastic about recycling and, and, you know, for, for obvious reasons, but I mean, it, it costs the city money, and I think that this is not something that's not without expense.
Sure. What we hope to do is.
People need to understand that.
What we hope to do is reduce cost implications. For instance, recycling is still less expensive than trash disposal.
Yeah, yeah.
So to the degree that any ton goes into recycling versus trash.
And it reduces the tipping fees, and I understand that they're saving.
So there's some, yeah, there's some cost reductions, but it's not a revenue generator.
Okay. You, you said that we don't have a work order system. Well, we do have something that masquerades as a work order system, which is the report of problem that appears on the city website that invites people to report potholes, for instance. One of the requests I've made is to understand better how that system is used, because I've had complaints that it's not used the way that it should be. I don't know whether that is something you have budgeted under communications for the website or somewhere, but I'd like to see attention to that. And if that means budgeting more money somewhere, then I'd like to see that.
Yeah, whatever system, if we move in that direction, needs to be multifaceted, because we still get a great number of direct calls that would have to be able to be integrated with a system like that.
Sure.
I'd just add that this, because I think this is the right place to do it. I mentioned before, in terms of the 2014 budget, whatever funds we do not expand down from the sustainability budget allocated in FY14, I would propose creating a sustainability reserve fund and make those available for the, as in addition to what is currently listed as the additional sustainability program for $30,000. So it may be that we succeed in spending down those monies for good purpose, but if we do not, I would propose that that's something that we would add into the, the option for the 2015 budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe we take a three- to five-minute break before police, just because we've been sitting here for two and a half hours, and let's just make it a quick one, but.
Try, try my best.
Expenditures, we we were given a mandate to to keep it as as close to last year as possible, and we did. FTEs, you'll note that in FY14, it was fifty eight point eight three and fifty eight point nine seven. This year, that was just due to two positions, some hours adjustments. Kathy Plevey went from point eight eight to full time because she was actually putting in more hours than than full time to begin with, and we had one crossing guard that had to increase hours as well, so.
What does SC three mean? What is SC three?
Oh, those are the other three positions. I put the the speed camera positions in there.
Speed camera.
And if you remember, last year, we took three positions out of the speed camera and put it into the general fund because we just weren't sure.
Which we first one, we took them out of the general fund and put them into the speed camera.
Yeah. Well, and and we still, every year, it's a fight, and every year, it's going to be it's going to be on the legislature's agenda whether we're going to have a speed camera program. So I would rather put projects and and expenditures in the speed camera that are, you know, short term.
One timers.
One time issues versus having salaries in there. And the only three positions that are still in the speed camera right now are the actual people that are running the speed camera program, one civilian and two sworn sergeant and a and a corporal. The capital budget took a hit this year. We were originally going to buy eight replacement cars to get rid of all the two thousand.
Seven?
Two thousand and seven Crown VIX. And if you remember, we had that discussion last year about when the the program was implemented, we bought like fourteen cars in one year, and and we wanted to spread it out. We still have a a plan of doing it, but we're only taking four cars in the capital. That's the only thing we have in the CIP is cars. Everything else is equipment replacement, the radios and those things. So we've taken those four cars out, but we're hoping to have some money in speed camera and in the drug enforcement fund that will actually keep us treading water so we're not going to be slammed next year or the year after having to replace that many more cars. We're still trying to stay on schedule, but we're just using alternative funding sources instead of the CIP.
And that large influx of of cars all at once was when we implemented the.
Correct.
The take home program.
Correct.
What year was that?
Because you said program, but you didn't say which program.
It was two thousand and seven, and those are the the initial eight two thousand and seven Crown VIX that we're going to be replacing this year. We're hoping to still replace them, so we take those out of service, but we're just going to be not taking the money out of the out of the CIP to do it. Yeah, well, go back one, no, don't go to the org chart. Salary and fringes went up by point oh six percent as a net increase because we did make some of these other cuts. I already talked about the FTEs and and I talked about the capital budget reduction.
Do you want me to go on?
Yeah, you can go on.
Oh.
And I will send you the org chart on non-slide so you can read it without your eyes.
We can actually read it on the screen.
Yeah, I know. See?
I told you.
I know, or she doesn't want us to read it.
Ninety percent of our budget is is personnel costs. The I I already talked about the alternative funding sources for for some of the purchases. Technology, LPR program, hopefully, if we do venture forward in expanding it, will be coming from external sources, will not be an impact on on our budget. The video sharing program, we may have some some funding impacts, but we just don't know yet. We're still in those planning stages. Philadelphia utilizes a a third party company that that manages their website, similar to like paying your tickets online, things like that. They've created a website where people can sign up and participate in the program, and we're looking to see what that ca would cost us.
Do you want to explain what the program is?
The Safe Cam program is where civilian cameras, not government owned cameras, it includes government owned cameras, but what we do is we solicit people to say, you have a home security system, you have a business security system, we'd like you to register it with us voluntarily, we will, you will give us access, tell us what type of system it is. So if we do have a crime or a trend in that area, we can go and pull the video, and it is a hundred percent voluntary. We talked about, you know, possibility of tax incentives or some other incentive for the people to put in those systems, which which I think would be a good idea as well.
So is what we have right now mostly businesses, or do we have some?
Well, we don't have any, well, we have businesses, but if there's a crime trend in an area, we actually have to go out and start looking for cameras, so we're trying to avoid that. Right now, we're in the phase where the patrol officers are going out, and if they see a camera, they fill out a form, and it goes back in, and we're starting to create the database of the cameras that we know are there. But we want to actually make this easily accessible from our website where they can sign up for the program.
Could could the CDA, the Crossroads Development Authority, help you with.
Sure.
Locating cameras, finding them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I can bring that to their attention, and I'm sure they'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely.
Chief, I spoke to the CFO of WAU, and they're going to contact you about sharing their video feeds.
And and we have the the video at the hospital where, you know, there's a fairly robust system where if there's an active shooter or an incident, they can bring a laptop right out to us, and we can we can use their cameras, but that's part of Adventist Healthcare, but that's not everybody. But we're more concerned really with with getting some cameras in residential neighborhoods where people have a security camera from their front door out, and it takes usually the, you know, the the minimum requirements, you'd have to have, you know, a thirty degree angle to just to the middle of your street so that you would get that tax incentive, you know, because it's not going to do us a whole lot of good if it doesn't have some of the street covered. But we're in the beginning stages of that, and that's that's where we are. But again, that's it's not a lot of fiscal impact. It may be for the software and and the backbone, but until then, we we really don't have an idea how much it's going to cost. Backup communication center, there's a couple of reasons we need to do it. One, if we have to abandon this building for whatever reason, we need to have a second place to do it. We can use Montgomery County Center up up in Rockville or in Gathersburg, but the reality is we need something that if it's a short term duration like a fire or smoke, that we just need to be able to get our people to to actually, other than using a cellphone for our two seven oh eleven hundred line and a portable radio, we need CAT access, computer dispatch access. So we're, we have the bay that we use for evidence and our ERT, there's an office upstairs, and that's where we're planning on putting it. It's a minimal cost, it's just a couple of computers, which we probably have, it's just a question of getting the the wiring done and doing that so we have a backup. The other reason is if there is eventually an a a renovation in the dispatch area, we're going to have to move our dispatch somewhere while they're doing it. We purchased some software, IA Pro software and the Beast software last year. Beast is our evidence management software. IA Pro is internal affairs and complaint tracking and early warning system tracking, and there's some add-ons that we'll be purchasing for that for the for the current year or FY15. And we are testing body worn cameras. Right now, there's no budget impact, we have not started putting them out on the street. There are, there are still a plethora of legal issues in the state of Maryland that haven't been addressed with two party consent on recording devices. The other issue is we have no idea where the legislature's going to go with it, but we'd like to be ahead of the curve because they may, next session, not this one, it didn't pass, I don't believe this session, but if they do pass some mandatory body worn camera regulations, then at least we'll be ready to jump into it when we need to, rather than being behind the the eight ball on it. You know, our biggest, really, right now, our biggest challenge is maintenance of staffing levels. Some of the the retirements slash retirements are easy, the resignations are not, people move on to other jobs. We're going to try and do a little bit better job of succession planning for the ones that we know are eligible to retire so we can start looking at recruiting beforehand and and keeping up with our 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 attrition level, and also timely recruiting and training.
Do you anticipate continuing to recruit after you filled the vacant sworn officer positions, given the over hiring authority, or would you stop until?
Well, yeah, there's, it's not, it's not even a quite, the the way I I see the regulation on over hire, which really, it's either budgeted or it's not, is we can over hire as long as we stay within our total budget. So it's really not over hiring, it's it's just staying within your budget. So we, if we anticipate somebody leaving and they give us a a drop dead date that they're going to leave, then we'll over hire, or we'll we'll early hire, let's call it that. Right now, I think we had, what, four hundred thousand dollars in almost in salary savings this year because of all the vacancies, so.
What's your normal, you know, what's the range of vacancies that you have each year in sworn officers?
Well, I don't know that they, other than the one day that I came in here and and jinxed us and said we were fully staffed, and the next week we weren't, we've never been at full staff, and I don't think, and Captain Bowers can give a better idea historically because I've only been here a year and a half, but we're usually down two or three.
But but so that represents like six people a year, or?
Not necessarily, it really, it really is dependent on on when those, when the people were hired and if they're eligible for retirement, for the normal retirements, if people get injured, I mean, these are things that can just happen that are outside of our control.
And you also have sometimes officers that are forced to be on administrative leave because of the use of their weapon?
Yeah, that, there was a string of officer involved shootings a couple of years ago before I got here, but I was I was actually working when some of those happened in the county, and yes, they're going to be on administrative leave for any number, I mean, we had some that were on administrative leave for a year because the shooting took place in French Georges County.
Right.
And the process was much longer there than it would have been here in Montgomery County. But those are those, those are the things that can just pop up, and there's just nothing you can do about it, and you just have to deal with it. You know, we had, we have two more officers leaving to go on to bigger and better things, so we're actually down four officers right now, not including the two in the academy. And then we have another one going off on an injury, and we already have two on light duty, so, or one on light duty and one on no duty. So we're down quite a number of people, but we're we're actively recruiting and trying to get those numbers filled as soon as possible, now, not not later, now.
And both people in the academy are still in the academy?
Yes, they are. Right? No surprise, yeah, they're, and Captain goes up every up every week or two and and checks on them, and they seem to be doing fairly well. I'd be very surprised if one of them doesn't come out near the top of the class, from what I understand, so I'm hoping that stays that way.
And some weeks back, I know I was questioning whether we were, whether we had an authorized strength of forty two or forty one, and there was something that somebody said in trying to figure out what happened when, that I believe that we probably are at forty two.
Correct.
Because I, because what I had forgotten was when we added either a a full position or a part of a position, when there had been funding for a.
Gang.
Gang officer, and that funding dried up, and we brought that in.
Correct.
So that we we added the funding, so my sense is that we are at forty two.
We're at forty two, that's the, I I believe when you were, you were talking earlier about the overage that was authorized back in the early two thousands, that was, that was from forty one to forty two, but then the gang position came in.
That was the one I didn't remember, so we're.
Right, so we're we're actually at forty two on paper.
And just to be clear, we have two officers in the academy, but, and when, at the time, let's say when they went into the academy, there were two other vacancies, there were four.
Now we have four vacancies.
Now we have another four, or continuing to.
Yeah, and we lost one to Montgomery County and the other one for personal reasons, family reasons or whatever, that he didn't specify, he had to leave, so. And they were both good officers, it wasn't that we're, you're losing somebody that we weren't going to cry about when they left, these guys are good officers, so, you know, but it is what it is. And we do have some good laterals in the pipeline, which, you know, we don't have to put them through an academy, so we're.
A lateral means?
They were, they were already trained, they come from another department, now there's, there's a couple of different ways we can do it, we can get people that are already trained in an academy but never been a police officer, and then we can also get people that are police officers in Maryland certified, and we can hire them and really just put them out on the street, so, but.
We we can gain the way we lose.
Well, the the problem, yeah, we we can steal them just like everybody else steals from us, but the reality is, you know, laterals are always problematic, you have to be very careful and selective because sometimes the reasons are jumping from one department to another. Sometimes the reasons are very valid and, you know, but that's something that we're not going to lower our standards just to grab people and throw them in and fill those The community warning police in position. The community warning police position is, is open right now, but we, we are spreading the wealth through all the patrol shifts until we can get fully staffed and get that position back in and have somebody staffing it. Enhancing cross-border communications, I mean, it's really got, since our, our crime meeting, we've really seen some improvements in, in the other agencies and getting this information to everybody on a daily basis. There's still no formalized software or CAD sharing, computer data sharing, but the, the foundation of people that are involved in it, so if one person's off, somebody else is picking up the slack. So we, we are doing a lot more cross-border communication. And I'm not going to beat on the SafeCam, we already talked a little bit about that. The GameCam is actually a very low, low-cost, not real high-tech solution. If you remember, some of the residents in Sycamore and Woodland were talking about getting the GameCameras, you know, that they use for tracking wildlife. At the time, when we were looking at it, a lot of those cameras really weren't going to be very useful for us, but there are actually some out there for, for less than $250 that have really good low-light capability and video capability and lock, and they're lockable on the trees or whatever. And we've actually already purchased a couple, we haven't gotten them in yet, but we're going to try starting to use those in crime hotspots.
How do they work, exactly?
Well, they're motion detectors and they have an infrared capability as well as daytime color cameras. And so if something crosses the beam and activates it, it could record, you know, high-def video as well as still, still photos. So, you know, if you put it in a, in a high-crime area where you're having a lot of larcenies from auto at night, you can at least get pictures of the vehicle maybe leaving the scene or, you know, getting pictures of the suspects. And it, it's motion-activated, you can keep, and just uses a little micro, or a little SD card, you pop in there just like any other camera. And if this technology, once we try it, works out, it's something that's relatively inexpensive and, and can be expanded, and, you know, the residents could actually use it as well. So, that's about it. Yep.
And, and when you mentioned the license plate readers, I just thought I'd mention that I think we came up with a meeting in the middle of May that we were going to come back to license plate readers. And, and the associated issues around whether, you know, how to deal with that in terms of a policy.
And, and we actually have created a draft policy that, that we'll, we'll share
And that's, that's what we'll be dealing with in the middle of May.
Yeah, I want to thank you for sending out those materials on the other jurisdictions, that was very helpful to read.
You did finally get it open? Yes, I did.
Can I just come back to the, the GameCam?
Sure.
When you said that residents can even use it, can you just expand on what you mean by that?
Yeah, actually, the, the people that, some of the victims of the burglaries during, were, were asking questions whether or not they could, would, it would be a useful tool to have. Not necessarily as a deterrent, because, you know, at night, somebody going through their backyard is not going to know it's there anyway. But would it help? And at the time, we looked at some of the older technology of the cameras, and they weren't that great. I mean, they're, they're grainy pictures, they're, you know, you're not going to be able to identify somebody, but some of the newer ones that are out now, and they're, and again, retail, and they're $250 a pop, and we picked up a couple for less than 200. So they have full video, HD video, and even at night, they were fairly high resolution. So yeah, it would be good for the residents if they decided they wanted to have one in their backyard, you know, to, to monitor the yard. Some of them actually have wireless communication and will alert you if something hits it, can send, I mean, it depends on how much you want to spend. But at the time, we didn't really think that it would be a cost-effective, but, because the, the quality of the pictures, but some of the cameras are actually good enough now that you could use it.
And how does the video get stored? I mean, it's on...
Just on a SD card. Yeah, and it's just standard, you know, format video. You know, my biggest concern is we throw these up and somebody steals them. But there are, we, we bought the kits that lock them onto whatever you hang them on, so. And, and they're very unobtrusive, they're about, you know, that big, small little box.
And do we have a policy in place of who looks at then that...
Not yet.
Okay.
Nope, don't even, we're going to play with them first and see how they work.
Play with them first, and then put the policy in place?
Well, we're going to play with them, because as long as we put it in, in a place where the people have no reasonable expectation of privacy, like public, then there's no issues anyway. The big issue is how, we, we need to play with them ourselves, you know, in, in enclosed environment, maybe even our parking lot, just to see how we're going to deploy them, because we haven't used them yet.
I have a couple of specific questions about the, the budget document and then just a couple of overall comments. On page 69, from previous, in previous years, we tracked hours of bike and hours of foot patrol, and those are gone this year. You know, we used, the, I think, the, no, I'm sorry.
We still track it, but we just didn't put it in.
I'd find it helpful to have in there for both of those two. And I know that counsel in past years has discussed those two metrics, so, and we talked about them this year as well. I note on page 72, I think maybe it's an error, in calendar year 13, number of arrest warrants obtained has an order of magnitude greater of 350 arrest warrants, whereas it's 30 and 55 in years before and after.
Is it which page?
72.
Yeah, I think that that is a mistake. I think that it's, I think it was 51. I think that three is the mistake.
Correct.
And also in the calendar years, that should be 12, 13, and 14.
12, 13, 14, okay.
Yeah, not 11, 13, 14.
And then my, an overall comment, and this sort of speaks to the city manager's presentation the other day, given that we had this crime summit and the attention in the community focused on it, and you've covered on some of this already in tonight's discussion, but I think it'd be helpful to have, you know, for example, a one-page summary that could be a insert to this document that becomes part of the record, that sort of summarizes all the ways that, you know, we're responding. So, you know, the GameCam's, the SafeCam program, the city is planning this upcoming May work session. The, I think if I'm understanding correctly, the idea of getting additional license plate readers, but that would be covered by a grant, so not necessarily something that has a budget
Right.
component, but nonetheless, trying to put, you know, recording that in the budget document, like it just shows a response. The, the acting city manager a year ago or so had done a, a nice job of summarizing, I think there was a similar summary of sustainability initiatives, and I think there was one more page like that, and that could sort of be a model. And it would just, I think, show, it would be a sort of a single reference point for people to see that response. That's it for me.
All right, I, I had two requests. The first, in response to a residence, this isn't directed to you, it's the city manager, in response to a residence suggestion, it would be great to have an evaluation about the benefits and the need here for accreditation of the police department. We used to be accredited, we haven't been for a number of years. I realize that there's a general perception that the department meets the kind of standards without having to go through the burden of accreditation, the burden on the current staff and the need to hire additional staff. Still, it seems worth an evaluation and a response from the city manager on that question.
And I can do a really quick, what it would cost us. I mean, there's the initial, the cost of accreditation is probably, you know, anywhere from eight to $14,000 just for the accreditation, but eight to $14,000 at the minimum for accreditation. But here, here's the issue with accreditation, there's, the staffing increase would be two full-time employees doing it versus not, right now where we, we just don't. And then during the accreditation, six months prior to accreditation, I, I know, I, I actually polled Rockville and Gaithersburg, they actually had another three to four staff of their sworn staff full-time during accreditation. Now, the last time this department was accredited, they had to pull all four investigators off of investigations for 30 days to get the accreditation done, and, and that's just not acceptable, to, to have people pulled off of criminal investigations and follow-ups to do accreditation. Out of the 18,000 law enforcement agencies in the United States, only about 1,400 are accredited. The, the reason for that is because if there is an expense, and it's a priority, and what you get out of accreditation, you know, I, I had to laugh, Rockville City said, yeah, we save $1,000 a month, or $1,000 a year on our, our, our legit insurance, but they spend $3,000 more just on accreditation. So, you know, I, that's not really what I would call a, a, a good way of spending money when you're being responsible. The other thing is there's timeliness of reports that have to be done every three months, and that's the full-time staff, and, and there's just no way around it. And right now, we're barely treading water, just keeping the staff that we have. It, it's not that I'm wholly opposed to accreditation, but it really doesn't provide us with anything, really, other than bragging rights.
Okay. Then the second request is that I would like to get the cost and the revenue recovery from the hiring of either an additional halftime or full-time parking enforcement officer. So that would be something for the FY15 budget, if it seems justified and my colleagues agree, but I'm not going to disjustify myself. I would like to know the costs and the benefits. Benefits are, of course, related to parking compliance, but also the revenue that comes in.
Yeah, I think we did estimate it, it was, it was pretty much cost neutral, if not, you know, we would, we would gain, we would have a positive revenue, but, but that's where we're at.
Right, we, we will provide that.
It would be cost neutral, you think, at either level? I, I know that you've said that the current parking enforcement officer occasionally gets pulled to, to crossing guard duty as a substitute and other stuff like that.
Well, and we, we also took over, he also took over the maintenance responsibilities for the parking meters as well, so that's time that he doesn't have as much time to write the citations as he does as pulling them in, sending them out for repair, that kind of thing. So we took that over from PW, so...
But just to be clear here, part of the question is also the demand. I mean, you know, anecdotally, I can tell you about, oh, you know, so-and-so complained to me about parking enforcement
Sure.
and all of that, but does that even, do those cases even add up to a halftime person? So that, that's part of the question as well. What is your, collectively, your perception of the need, yeah, the need, the revenue generated, the cost of it, well, you already said that it's...
Well, and I believe there used to be, there used to be a nuisance abatement and a halftime position as well. Now, when the last person left the department, Rojas became the full-time nuisance abatement officer, and they never filled, and they lost that other halftime position. So it wa, there was one there.
We'll have the information.
We'll have the information.
At one point, there were two parking enforcement positions.
I think it was one and a half, wasn't it?
One and a half.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, stuff's changing, it's going to be changing over the next few years, which is going to shape the demand, but most immediately, sometime in the summer, I assume Bus Boys and Poets will open up, and, you know, for me and my ward, that's the, that's the big event, aside from the people already complaining, as you full, full well know, about parking spillover from Republic and other old-town businesses, which, thank goodness, are thriving. And plus, you're going to be patrolling, once we get this parking pay station in the Tacoma Junction lot.
Just on the demands, I mean, I think you're right, that the, the demand is, is, is the key component that we're going to have to, to do a good job of measuring. I went to a, a community sort of parking meeting on an area just off of the Old Town area, and they were contemplating a residential parking sort of change, and I think, once they had their meeting, not all their, not all the residents were experiencing some of the challenges that, that some other residents were experiencing, and so it was, it was unclear. I think even, even I, myself and some of the community members, it was unclear about, certainly there are some impacts that are close to the Old Town area, but as you get further away, it seems to mitigate just a little bit. But, you know, when it comes to things like Bus Boys and Poets coming in, I don't have a good sense about what that impact is going to be on the city.
And I think there's a distinction between inconvenience of not being able to find parking and safety issues. And so, for example, on the top of West Moreland, where people ignore that yellow line, that's a, that's a safety hazard
That's right.
versus not coming home and having to park a half a block away from your house.
That's right.
Just a couple of notes on that, on that issue. We also certainly hear from people who complain about getting tickets and citations
Sure they do.
for, you know, running into the post office for 10 minutes. We heard about someone who had to park outside of the Cheesecake place, couldn't find parking. Not too long ago, the managers of the Cheesecake place offered to bri, give them free, free food next time they came in for their inconvenience. I also reached out to the Republic staff about using the city lot as valet parking at night, and they, they clearly have not heard the same issues regarding parking of their customers that, that, at least they didn't relay it back to me. So, anyway.
Do we know what's happening with the parking behind, like where the post office is that was going to be metered and kind of all that went away and...
Well, that, that would be the, the private meters.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
I had just heard that, from John Ursiolo's parking lot, that the system that he had set up to put there, it decided to change, and so they had to replace some of the underground connections.
So, so it's a change in hardware?
Change in hardware, yeah. And so he's still planning to go ahead with it, just taking him a long time.
Because that can have an effect, either positive or negative, on what's going on?
That's, that'll probably push some people out, and then the Mark's Kitchen parking lot, you know, the one behind those buildings as well, so they're going to probably wind up doing something, I'm sure, if it gets bad on their property.
I'm, I'm thinking that the, the making Ursiolo's lot into a paid lot will free up spaces, that's his theory, that get rid of some of the people who park there during the day, that commute at Metro, because he, and he testified to us about three or four years ago about, about the, the fact that it's just tried everything he could, and this was his last resort, to keep those kind of people out.
Put them in the neighborhood.
Well, and, and the other problem, when you start getting paid lots, people will try to, well, that don't want to pay, even if they're, you know, using one of those establishments, will go to side streets, or they're going to go to metered spaces that, you know, maybe pass the hours, that they're going to have to put money in, they're, you know, people are basically going to, where it's free, so...
Becomes a dog-eat-dog kind of a thing.
Yeah. That's why parking, paid parking in DC is a, is a big moneymaker.
I think we've all contributed to it. I have some questions, if I may. Sir, I, I'm just curious, in your departmental summary on page 61, if you look down the bottom chart where the department expenditures by division, criminal investigations actual in FY13 was 883,000, and this year proposed, it's an 80% increase from what it was
We had pulled...
two FYs ago.
Right, well, one may have been that gang funding had, had gone away, and we pulled that one position out of...
Speed camera.
And then we also had positions in speed camera that we pulled out last year. There's three positions.
Oh, okay. And, and also in communications, a couple lines above, there, from FY, the last actual FY was 13, that's, that's jumped up 63% from...
That, that was speed camera as well.
Speed camera as well, okay. Okay, that's a reasonable answer.
And I think we moved, we all didn't wait from admin to...
We moved Leo. This actually was because we've been short two people here.
The, yeah, that too. The actual salary savings, because we've been down dispatchers for quite some time.
Okay. The performance criteria under operations, number of traffic stops, you know, I've seen on page 69, a nice increase in number of traffic stops of like 27%, at least, that's what you project, is there, is that part of a, a policy effort on your, or are they just getting better at it?
I think we got some younger officers too. We have some younger officers that are, you know, a little bit more aggressive.
Uh-huh.
And we do have a, a lot of directed patrol, directed traffic posts that people will hit the stop signs certain times of day. One thing I didn't mention in here, and I'll just real quick, we bought two MetroCount devices, those are the traffic measuring devices, no longer, if somebody says there's speeders down the street, you know, we're not going to... No longer, if somebody says there's speeders down the street, you know, we're not going to dedicate officers there for hours and hours over a period of a week. We can put the MetroCount down and actually get the real, real numbers, speeds, counts, and date and time of day, and software actually will plot it all out for us, so...
I'm glad to hear that. Because I, I think a lot of people assume they're speeding.
Right.
Because it just feels like it.
Yeah, the example is Philadelphia Avenue. They said, people are flying down there. We put, the county loaned us their MetroCount, and we, we tried it out, and the average speed was 28 miles an hour. And the high speed, there's one way over, but the rest were actually 31. 31 was, was the average overspeed.
I just have one last question, that's apropos, not the budget. In the criminal investigation division, you've got, what, about seven or eight? Are there, do we have any women in that, who are in the criminal investigation?
Yep. The sergeant that runs the CID is, is, is female, Michelle Holmes, and then one of the investigators is female, so 50% of CID.
Huh, okay. Thanks.
Chief, I anticipate that, as a council, we'll probably move forward on the LPRs. But what I would like to see is that we hire a consultant, so we know exactly what would be the best number for us to get for the city. And I'd like us to get more fixed-position LPRs. And can you tell me, will facial recognition be part of these devices?
No.
Or is that something we had to do separate?
Well, there is, facial recognition is, is a whole nother, well, these cameras are designed to, with, you know, OCR software, to, to read the tag and take a picture of the car. That's all they do.
Okay.
Facial recognition software, we actually, the state has some at this point, like, if, for instance, I have a picture of a suspect from a, a security camera, I can send that picture to the state, and they already have the ability to check that picture with facial recognition software for, against driver's license and criminal databases. We can actually do some of that ourselves, right from the state dashboard on our computers in the, in the station, but it's, that, that doesn't, that's not the most accurate software yet.
Okay. All right.
But, no, it would, we're just talking fixed and mobile license plate readers.
All right. Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Can I follow up with one question on LPRs? It occurred to me that if you have enough stationary LPRs in our city, and as well as in the district, in the Prince George's, that that might help reduce the need for high-speed chases, because simply, you don't need to follow the person, or, you know, right on their tail. You could back off and, and, and keep, keep track of where that person is without worrying so much you're going to lose them if you're not on their tail all the time.
Only if you can get real-time results when they hit the LPRs, and, and that's the issue. And it still does, it's still, it's just like, when you look at, at the war in Afghanistan, it still comes down to the soldier on the ground, you know, taking out the bad guy, and just because they go through an LPR, we still have to identify the person in the car and, and arrest them. But it certainly enhances our ability to find where the cars are going after they commit a crime, and locate these vehicles, or, or apprehend them, and get a pattern, so we can prosecute them later on. That's the real advantage to them. And also, if there's a, if, if a stolen car comes into the city, and we have fixed or mobile LPRs out there, it's going to alert us right away.
Chief, I have another question. I think at the, the paper that the Sycamore and Woodland folks put together, they had asked for an external evaluation of the department. Any thoughts on that, or...
You know, again, I mean, we're talking about, you know, a, an external evaluation of what? I mean, you know, from the top down? I mean, what are we really asking to do? And I, I would oppose it unless there's some specifics that they're looking for. I, I do know that there was some backstory behind that request, and, and again, that came down to, could the county police provide the same level of service? And, and the answer simply is no. You would get 14 to 16 officers for the same price you're getting 42, and they would never be in the city.
We had asked the city manager to evaluate the question of a consultant, and, and the city manager's evaluation was that one would not be merited here.
Okay, thanks.
I'll forward that email to you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just double-check and see if there's anything that didn't come up in the context of these departmental or area presentations that we need to get on the table. Is there anything that anybody wants to put out there for a request of staff that they haven't made, or whatever? Yes?
One thing, and it's, it's small, but it shows up all throughout the budget, and that's employee recognition. And some departments have zero, some have a few hundred dollars, some have a few thousand dollars. And my two questions, and my first question is, is that what is that generally, but what is that money used for?
The, the number that you see there is very specifically targeted to employees who hit magic numbers, like 20. And so, that's assigned to that particular years of service, and so, there's a certain amount of money that is allocated to them, and is, and is allocated to that department because of a particular employee. There's a, a much greater number for employee recognition and, and activities that we do to kind of, you know, improve morale, or what, or celebrate meet projects.
But that larger number doesn't show up here.
That, that larger number is in non-departmental, because we don't know who that goes to.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm glad I asked, because I was thinking, gee, that's not a lot of money to be rewarding people.
Yeah, but pretty, would be pretty cheap.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Okay. Thanks. I, I'm happy with my question.
And one, one thing I wanted to just toss out there was a request for an item or items on the reconciliation list. We had requests from some members of the public, and something that had come up to me before we even started the budget process about the 125th anniversary, and I'm not sure what an appropriate number would be. I'm not sure I could attach a number to it, but maybe just kind of a placeholder number. And I wonder whether that might also kind of join up with my sense of us potentially needing some money for potentially inaugurating something in the way of recognition, where we haven't had that work session discussion yet. We're going to have that work session discussion, but I'm not sure we'll have a resolution to that as we get to reconciling the budget. So, all I'm thinking about is kind of placeholder numbers. Anything that might have to be done more directly could be done as budget amendment once we get into the fiscal year. But just thinking to put a marker on the reconciliation list for those that are both kind of recognition-oriented pieces, and maybe just as a, as a placeholder, putting a, like, a 10,000 for the two combined, not knowing what might be needed. So, I just want to get that on the list.
Let me follow up. In terms of reconciliation list, I would assume, would you be keeping a reconciliation list, or do you anticipate that we keep a reconciliation list?
I haven't started.
Okay.
I already put mine on.
So, okay, great.
And so, any, anything else that people come up with as we go through at some point, we'll get to the point of going through the reconciliation list.
And I just had a couple other comments. I would, and it partly comes as a result of the, the various places in here where we've seen hours not previously being reported as FTEs coming in. I'd really appreciate an assessment of how many outstanding hours of that sort of contract labor there are. For example, essentially trying to figure out what, what might appear in future budgets of potentially workforce that's sort of not showing up. I don't know quite how to describe that as accurately as they need to, but I think you sort of get what I'm interested in.
Perhaps I can, yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that'd be useful is if we just described how we categorized and kind of made some decisions on FTEs. My anticipation is that there wouldn't be a surprise next year that there's, that we're changing something. I mean, I think, I think we've kind of worked through what we feel counts as FTE number, and what's clearly contractual for something else. But that's, I, I think it would be helpful if I shared that with kind of what our thinking was on that, so you could understand it.
I'm just trying to think about, you know, we have this city policy of trying to use actual employees with benefits, and so, knowing whether 94% of our, you know, our hours are covered by those sorts of employees, or 98%, or some sort of metric, that's, that's sort of where I'm headed, and I don't know the right way to do that, or, or anything. And then, at some point, I'm, we're going to go back to, we have a public hearing on the tax rate. Is that right?
Twenty-eight.
When is that, 28? Okay.
Twenty-eight.
So, I'm going to spend some more time thinking about tax rate issues, and, you know, I still have this overall concern about the reserve fund balance. I was looking back at the 2012 adopted budget, 2011 adopted budget, 2012, 2013, 2014, looking at the projected total reserved and unreserved balances in the general fund, and how we generally end up with more than we expected in the, in the budget year after year, and we talked about this a little bit last week. But from my perspective, the point is not to have that amount of money that's being held year after year after year, keep, keep growing, and, and that's currently what it's doing. We had set a goal for ourselves last year in terms of a reserved and unreserved balance, and we're, we're not only are we, are we that greater number at the beginning of this year than the number we were setting as our goal, we're going to end the year with a number that's greater than our goal last year. So, that's a concern for me.
As far as reconciliation items, my goal personally is to see if we can't, I know you've recommended the 57 cents, keeping the rate the same, but I prefer to have us reduce the rate so that it's at the, what's the term that I'm looking for?
Constant yield.
The constant yield rate. Because my, my goal is to keep taxpayers in this city from not writing a larger check for, for real estate taxes, because ultimately, people aren't, they don't really care what the rate is. They just care what, how much it is they have to pay, and they look at that, and they say, this is more than I paid last year, and this is more than I paid the year before that, and so on. And we were able to do that last year, and I'd like, I think we were, didn't we?
Yes. We reduced it by a penny, didn't we?
Yes.
So, that's, whether or not we can or not, can't say, too soon. But that's where I'd like to try, see if we can get to.
And I would say that, from, from my vantage point, it depends on how successful we are at coming up with money, with revenues to meet rising expenses that aren't based on the property tax rate, and that comes down to things like success at getting highway user revenues back up to where they're supposed to be, or tax duplication, or other things like that.
Right. Yeah, there's income variables as well, because we don't know what, what the income tax revenue share is going to actually come to. I'm, as I said it last week, I'm kind of, or Monday, inclined to think that they'll be a little higher than, than you've estimated, but...
The difference between the, and I think we had this in, I'm not sure if we had this in the presentation on Monday, but the difference between the constant yield rate and the 57 cents, which is the same rate as last year, is 118,000.
Hundred and eighteen thousand, yeah.
In total.
Okay.
And we've, if you, if you split that over the number of property taxpayers over a year, I don't know what that number is, actually.
It's not a very large number, obviously, for any one individual taxpayer. It's just that it's almost because it's such a small number that it aggravates the heck out of people.
And I would hope that we can make sure that the two rates are the same. But one thing that concerns me is, even though this is my second term going through the budget, our headcount continues to grow. And our tax base is the same it's been for the last 20 years. And I don't think that we can continue to, we can continue to sustain how we're going to go as a city if we continue to add the number of people that we employ, but we don't figure out a way to get taxes other than from single-family homeowners.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just mention once again, it's not like a broken record, I'd like to see the parking meter rate raised to a dollar citywide. I'd also like to see the end of a, the 50% discount on the residential parking permits for hybrids. I think that is no longer justified, and in particular, those vehicles take up just as much road space as any other vehicle, and cost just the same to process a permit as any other vehicle. So, those are two small revenue items.
And is the, just remind me, or the, is the authority to change those, the city managers?
The parking rate, I'm pretty sure is, we changed city code a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think so.
And, but he has to pass...
It would have a budget impact, but the, the authority to do it rests with the city manager.
And as the owner of two hybrids, I would be okay with it.
Because you don't need parking permits.
Yes, I do.
You have parking, you have parking permits in your area?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, that's right, recently.
It is, however, I think, a good idea during a budget process to consider fees and, and these kinds of things as, as part of the discussion, as opposed to just waiting till after you do a budget, and then we say, ha-ha, now we're going to raise the fees. That doesn't sound, sound right.
By the way, a bit of a chat some of us had during our break, one could contemplate cost recovery for the dog park from some form of fee associated with dog park use, noting that they'll be putting not only construction demands, but operational demands that could include waste collection, for instance. That probably wouldn't be something that we would institute now, because the thing isn't there yet, but something to contemplate.
Yeah, because Tacoma Dogs has promised that there would be a volunteer core of people that would maintain it. With all due respect, we don't know how, and I'll, to coin a phrase, that, that, that energy to keep that park clean, because it really needs to be kept clean. I mean, that, 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 all that enthusiasm may literally poop out.
Thanks. I think we needed that.
I couldn't help myself.
I think we have budgeted that we would be doing the maintenance for, and we would appreciate any additional assistance for that, but I would certainly just want to make sure that we at least budget for that, because it ultimately will be our responsibility, no matter what happens.
Do you know, when people rent out the auditorium, are video services still free?
Video services are not free.
Okay.
Unless it is a, it is something that is a, a city function, and, you know, that there's some partnership, or that the council has asked that it be a, a specific activity. We charge extra for the video services.
Okay, good.
I'd add to the possible list of reconciliation items, some sort of place marker for work in the neighborhoods affected by the detours, when, if the bridge closes. So, money that could pay for speed bumps, replacement of existing speed bumps, temporary speed bumps, street signage, repainting, all the sort of relatively minor things that could add up in Ward, primarily in Ward Five and, and Ward Two, but could be Ward Three as well, I suppose, and maybe even signage in Ward Six. So, I don't know if it's, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 as a, as a placemark. It may be that we don't need it, it may be the project doesn't happen for two years, but it would be nice to have the flexibility to be able to do those projects, and to use it for contracts or, or other services.
I would support that.
So, we'll, we'll get into support and not later.
Well, I'm just giving him moral encouragement.
I thought he was going to use another dog analogy.
Well, I was, I was waiting to use another dog analogy on that he's dogged in his pursuit of those issues.
I'll, I'll work on it. I have to think of it.
Anything else before we adjourn at 11 o'clock? We're adjourned. And we'll be back here a week from tonight.